Al DiOrio here. It is 6:02. We all good?
Thank you.
First item to attend to is approval of our minutes. That would be October 7, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 7.
I have a motion.
Carolyn, I second that motion.
I have a second. Hearing none, all in favor? DiOrio, yes?
Rowan, yes.
Nice guess.
Shumshini, yes.
Carolyn, yes.
Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda. Under All Business. Development plant review. Photovoltaic solar energy system. Revity Energy LLC. Main Street at Route 95, Exit 1 and 40th. Gray Lane, AP 7 Lot 62C, 64, and 65. Revity Energy LLC applicant. Applicant and/or their representatives available.
Good evening, Attorney Karen Browning, on behalf of Revity. Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Revity Energy is presenting tonight a solar development at Zero Main Street and 46 Gray Lane. That is Platte 7 Lots 62C, 64, and 65. Very brief overview. The combined acreage of those three lots is 29.04 acres. The proposal is for an 8.25 megawatt AC solar array. We have several team members with us tonight who will move through the presentation and the application materials that have been submitted by way of a brief introduction. They are Mr. Ralph Colombo from the applicant Revity Energy. David Russo, our engineer from Dupree Engineering. Ed Pimental is our planning and zoning expert. Mr. Pimental is not able to be with us tonight, but his report has been submitted for your review. Nicole Milanefi, our environmental engineer from Sage Environmental. John Carter is here. He's our landscape architect from John C. Carter and Company. Tom Sweeney is our real estate expert from Sweeney Real Estate and Appraisal. And finally with us is Scott Rabidoux, our wetland specialist from Natural Resource Services. As you may or may not know, this property is located in the Hopkinton Industrial Park. It is currently vacant. The existing site conditions will be described in a few moments. The property is zoned commercial, so the solar use is allowed by right. The proposal tonight meets all the dimensional standards. We are not seeking any dimensional relief. Just by way of background, we were last before you on May 6 for a pre-application meeting. Since that time, we have confirmed with the zoning official at your planner's request, the frontages and the required setbacks for the property, and the plans abide by those details. The plans have also been submitted to the fire marshal for review. And also state permit applications have been submitted to both Rhode Island DEM and DOT and are currently pending. Now, Mr. Chair, several reports were submitted with our application. In order to move things along, I would ask that those materials and reports be accepted and be made part of the record. We will be referring to them at various times during the presentation, and I think doing this might speed things up.
Noted.
With that, I'll turn it over to David Russo from Dupree Engineering to walk through the plan set.
Dave, press star 9, please. And press star 6.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. For the record.
Good evening. David Russo with Dupree Engineer, professional engineer and project manager of this project. So the site has multiple frontages on Gray Lane. It's located east of Gray Lane, southeast of Route 95, and west of Route 3. The wetlands on the site were flagged by Natural Resource Services. There's three wetlands that were flagged. One is in the southeast corner of the property. And then another one is located on the eastern edge of the property. And then another one, the northeast section of the property. When you look at the site, there's a swath of land located between our property and Route 3. We met or spoke to the zoning official, and they issued a letter that this development as it's shown meets the zoning code. And there were some questions about that piece of land. And that land that's east of our property, between our property and Route 3, is actually part of State Right-of-Way. So there's no additional area to the east. It's just a way. It just gets really wide as you get to the area. Ms. Davis? Yeah, I was going to ask if you could mute. Thank you. Dupree Engineering has completed a class 1 survey of the property that was submitted as part of the plan set. The existing ground conditions on the property, on the west side of the property off of Gray Lane, that area was historically, looked like it was farmed in the past, so it's mostly low-lying vegetation in that area. As you move further west, the topography starts to increase or incline up to a high point in the western, eastern area of the site. And that eastern area of the site is mostly wooded vegetation. And as it goes up to that high point, it drops back down to Route 3 towards those low-lying wetland areas. As stated, the project that's being proposed is an 8.25 megawatt AC. We've submitted that layout to zoning, and they've signed off on that and issued a letter on that. We've completed the stormwater design and analysis of this site and the proposed grading on the site. We're proposing three ponds, pond areas on the site, two infiltration ponds, and one detention pond. And then we have an access road that runs from Gray Lane across the site to close to the intersection of Main Street and Frontier Road. The majority of the grading on the site is within those areas. The rest of the site, we've tried to maintain the existing grade as best as possible. There's some small, steep sections up at the top of the site in the east that we're proposing to kind of just smooth out so the panels can go across those areas, but they're very insignificant areas. The solar array is going to be surrounded by a security fence, and that fence is 21.4 acres, which is below the 75% requirement in the town ordinance. The application to DEM for all the stormwater design has been submitted and is pending with DEM. Part of that application, we were required to show no increase in stormwater flow to the wetland areas or budding properties. We're also required to submit an operation and maintenance manual for the maintenance of these systems long-term. And then we're also required to submit a soil erosion and sediment control plan for during construction of the site. The access that we have shown off of Main Street is connecting to a state right-of-way and state roadway. So we were required to submit a RIDOT physical alteration permit for that connection. That has been submitted. It's pending review. The Main Street entrance to the property is where the proposed interconnection will be. The interconnection will go across the street to Frontier Road and down Frontier Road, and it catches up with the Frontier Road solar development improvements also. The utility poles, there'll be a few above-ground utility poles coming off of Main Street. National Grid's still working on that final design. And then typical to other solar sites, after those first few above-ground poles, any electrical work after that would be underground through the site. The panels themselves are ground-mounted panels, typical to other sites with the ground-mounted tilt. The front lip sits about three feet off the ground, and the back can range anywhere from eight to 12 feet. We have submitted our plans to the fire department. We spoke to the fire department also, and at this moment, they didn't have any concerns, but they would complete a full review after the, assuming town approval is granted. And then typical to any solar site, there will be construction traffic, but following construction of the site, the only traffic is periodic maintenance of the site, whether that's electrical or maintenance of the grass or the pond areas. We're not proposing any water or sewer service to the site, and no lighting is proposed on the site. We've also submitted a decommissioning estimate to the town for review, and that total was approximately $231,000, and similar to the one that was submitted for Frontier. And then lastly, John Carter and Associates has prepared a landscape plan in regards to the visual buffering of the project, and I know John will speak further to that tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I don't know if you're waiting till the end.
No, I guess that each of the experts handle questions after their presentation, at least from the planning board members. We might wait and hold public questions until the end. So if everybody's okay with that arrangement. Planning board members, any questions for this particular expert at this time?
This is Emily. I just had a question. Oh, sorry, Keith.
No, no questions for me.
Okay. Did you say that this was going to be connected to the Frontier Road project? Can you describe that a little bit more?
In terms of utilities. So Frontier Road requires utility upgrades on Frontier Road, pole upgrades. And the poles from this site, from this property, would end up going down Frontier and work into those upgrades of the poles. Because the Frontier Road interconnections right off that entrance to the old pavilion area.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Would this interconnection be separate from the existing pole line, or would it be incorporated into that as more of a visual concept than anything else?
I believe if I understand your question, Ron, it'd be interconnected with the same. It wouldn't be too separate, if that was the question.
It was. What's more in my mind is it's not going to be two rows of poles. It'll be along the same line, so there'll be one.
Correct.
Optical obstruction, if you will. Okay, thank you, Dave.
This is Carolyn. I have a general question, and it's a question I've had with all of the solar projects that have come before us. You can give me the general answer. You know, you're telling us that the grid is working on the design. Before that, the grid has communicated to you that they are prepared to accept the electricity that you guys are offering. How do you get that acceptance? It comes in a formal communication, right? Do you have a letter from National Grid saying that they will accept your product?
Yeah, Carolyn, this is Ralph Colombo. We go through a process for National Grid, is we do a feasibility study first. And that feasibility study tells us what the upgrade requirements are to install a project of this size and for National Grid to accept it. We've done that, and we have that back from National Grid. And we've submitted for our high-impact study. That impact study is on hold right now because National Grid is doing what's called an area cluster study. They're taking all the solar projects in this area of the state, Richmond, Hopkins, and Westerly, and they're looking at it together to see how they impact the system and determining if, in what extent transmission upgrades are required. And when they finish that study, they reconvene with the impact study, and then eventually they give us an interconnection services agreement, which is the contractual agreement for them to interconnect us. So it's a process.
It is.
Yes.
So, for instance, the Frontier Road project, you've gotten an acceptance letter from National Grid.
We have a feasibility study that shows that we can interconnect, and they're in the same processes as I just described. The area cluster study, Carolyn, has all projects in this area on the same timetable. We are waiting for National Grid to finish that area cluster study, and I expect to get that back in December, January of next year.
Okay. So what brings me to this point is the cluster thing. In my mind, and this doesn't come from anywhere else but my own warped thinking, how much solar energy can the National Grid actually accept from our community? So I guess what I'm asking you for is verification and validation that if we go through this project, and I don't think it'd be as extensive as the Frontier Road program, but as we go through this project, we would like to set guarantee in place that your program is actually going to be plugged in and the grid is going to accept it. So that's where I'm coming from, and I appreciate the explanation, and I think probably more of a concern for you than it would be for me, right?
I think that's a fair assessment.
Thank you. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any other planning board members? Okay, since we're in the overview stage, I'll just get my comment out early in the game. I don't know if you want to deal with it now or you're dealing with it a little bit later. Pretty sure that when this application came before us previously, I expressed some concerns about the proximity of the panels to the southerly boundary of 95. Doesn't look like that. Comment was embraced. Somebody care to explain what's going on here?
Chairman DiOrio, this is Ryan Colombo from Revity Energy. Based on your comments from the last meeting regarding the southerly border of 95, what we propose here, we'll probably get to it later in the review of the landscaping plan, is a supplemental buffering of trees in that area to further block the view that you're referring to. So I think once we get to John Carter's landscaping plan, we'll be able to talk to that in more detail and really show you the view card, which wasn't the expected.
Okay, I'm not seeing that on the plan, but let's wait until Mr. Carter cares to address it. Okay, so hearing nothing else from this particular expert, will the applicant care to move it along?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Next up, I'd ask Sage Environmental to go through briefly the environmental impact statement that was submitted.
Okay, Nicole, press star 9, please. All right, and now press star 6. And then please state your name for the record.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. This is Nicole Milanefi from Sage Environmental. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island, and I conducted an environmental impact statement for the development that has been submitted to the board and is available on the documents that are online. The objective of the environmental impact statement was to understand the potential impacts on the environment due to the solar development. And when I use the word "environment" in the environmental impact statement, what I'm referring to is we looked at the geology and the soils, hydrology and water quality, floodplains, wetlands, wildlife habitat and vegetation, visual resources, air quality, noise, transportation, cultural resources, and solid and hazardous waste, and how they would be impactful to the environment. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of the findings. However, additional details are available in the environmental impact statement. So as already expressed, the area, the site is zoned commercial, and it is located in the industrial park in Hopkinton. It abuts an existing solar facility that's not developed by Revity, by another development, and it also abuts 95, and there's no residential properties that surround it. There is 42 string inverters that are proposed to go in with four Cooper Power Series Transformers. The Transformers will use Enviretemp, which is the environmental-friendly transformer oil. And located on the equipment pads where the Transformers will be located, will include containment that is sufficient to contain at least 125% of the fluid that's found in the Transformers. If you look in the environmental impact statement, there is additional details on that containment system as well as the safety data sheets for Enviretemp. The site will be surrounded by a fence, and that fence will be elevated approximately six inches, and that will allow for the passage of small animals to go through the development area. There's no planned use of chemicals, solvents, or herbicides during the operation and maintenance. And so the soils, there's no expected impacts to the soils because after construction, they're going to be stabilized and vegetated, so there's no impacts associated. There is some prime farmland that is denoted in that western portion of the site that is wedged between 95 and the solar farm. But the insulation of the solar panels will not have any permanent effects on the soil, and it would not necessarily inhibit the future use of the land for agricultural purposes. The insulation is ground surface, so there's minimal excavation expected, so there would be no groundwater impacts expected. Natural Resource Services conducted a wildlife habitat assessment, and from that, they looked at wetlands and marked the wetland areas as Mr. Russo had discussed. And there's no expected impacts to the wetlands because they're going to be protected, and there'll be a 50-foot buffer around them. And when they were out there, they did not observe any run of tools. They concluded that the most valuable habitat within the site exists along the riverine wetland area that is in the southern portion of the site. And in that area, there's not going to be any development, so the forest canopy will be preserved and the current value of the travel corridor for the wildlife will be maintained. So there's no impacts expected with that, and there's no impacts expected with threatened or endangered species because there's none known on the site. But Mr. Rabidoux from Natural Resource Services is here to answer any additional questions that you have on the habitat assessment conducted for that. We also looked to see if there was any concerns from flooding, and it's not located with any floodplains. And we looked at the forest conditions. Land Management Services conducted a forest assessment, and Mark Tremblay is available if you have any questions on the forest conditions. But the conclusion of the assessment was that it is mostly comprised of abandoned upland seals at various stages of reforestation through a succession process, and that the understory is comprised by the heavy presence of non-native invasive plants with shrubs and vine and honeysuckle and multi-flora rose shrubs that are impacting the native plant conditions. A noise assessment was also conducted, and that was evaluating to determine what the off-site noise at the property line, let me rephrase that, at the property line. And it was determined that noise would be less than 40 decibels with the addition of a sound barrier on the inverters. So the noise assessment concluded that a noise reduction coefficient of 0.27 or greater would be needed. So what that means is a barrier would need to go around the inverters, such as a wooden fence. The specific location and design of those barriers, though, would be determined following the post-construction environmental noise assessment that would be conducted within 90 days of the solar farm becoming operational. And the reason for that is that it's expected that the combination of the environmental conditions, the trees and the shrubs, and some other site-specific features, such as the fence, will serve to dampen some of those additive noise levels. And it's possible that, because conservative assumptions were made with the noise assessment, such as allowing the continual spread of noise and not having any dampering effect, that there's the potential that there may not be a need for sound barriers. There's no need for lighting, so there's no impacts from light pollution. And then we looked at the cultural and historical side, and the Public Archaeological Laboratory, commonly referred to as PAL, conducted a Phase 1 archaeological survey to determine if there was any significant archaeological deposits in the solar development area. And it concluded that any archaeological deposits that were within the development area is unlikely to yield significant new information, and was not recommended for listing in the state or national register, and no additional archaeological investigation was recommended. This was submitted to the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission, and they concurred with PAL's assessment. They did note that there are three historical cemeteries that are located on the site, but each cemetery is located further than 25 feet from the development activity, so it was concluded that there's no impact to historical or cultural items. Visual, the goal, the overall goal of the site design is to minimize any visual impacts of the property. So it was determined that the impacts would be negligible during operation and maintenance. So the conclusion to that was that the construction activities that are associated with the installation of the solar project will produce some minimal adverse effects. However, that would be consistent with any commercial or residential development. It's not specific to just solar development. And there are minimal wildlife impacts expected because the most valuable habitat area is not part of the project development area. And that during the 30 years that the site would be operated and maintained as a solar development, there are no expected impacts. The design of the solar development is being done to minimize the removal of vegetation and will include buffering and screeding to avoid adverse visual impacts to any of the adjacent properties. Sorry. The use of the site as a solar farm would have no long-term, permanent effects on the land and would not necessarily inhibit the future use of the land for residential or commercial or agricultural purposes in the future. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you very much. Planning board members, any questions for this expert?
None from me.
None at this time.
This is Emily. I have a question.
And before you ask your question, I'll say that I don't have questions.
Okay. What is the total acreage of trees and vegetation to be removed on these parcels?
Let me, I have that written right here. Let me look it up.
So the forested area that's planned for clearing is approximately 22.75 acres. And of that 22.75 acres, 17 acres is the solar panel. So that additional area is being cleared for the shade, to not impact from a shading perspective.
Okay, so 22.75 acres will be cleared, and that in your assessment amounts to minimal adverse effects on the existing environment and ecology?
Right. I mean, it's zoned for commercial, so if there is going to be another commercial property put in there, there would be clearing associated with that as well. So looking at it from after the system has been put into place, what would the impacts be? And from anthropogenic activity, a solar farm would be less impactful than some other commercial development.
I will agree to disagree. But basically, my assertion is that this actually constitutes quite a drastic change to the existing environment and ecology. And I would ask that the environmental impact statement be honest about that and state the total acreage of trees to be removed. And this can all be in the executive summary right up front so that folks are aware of the realistic impacts of this project, and they're all on the table.
The information is in the environmental impact statement. It's on page 10 in section 2.3.
This is Attorney Karen Browning on behalf of the applicant. To be clear, and to, I agree with Nicole's assessment, and let's be clear, this is a commercial zoned property. The property owner has rights to develop that property. The town of Hopkinton has a zoning ordinance and subdivision regs, in this case, a development plan review set of regs, all which guide and restrict a property owner when seeking to develop their property, and in this case, in a commercial way. This project conforms to that, to your ordinance and to those regulations. I understand the concern, but this project has been purposely designed to conform with both of those things as well as a DEM permitting review using best management practices. So to say that it has, you know, it's not meeting one of, potentially not meeting one of the requirements is just simply not correct. And to piggyback on what Nicole said, we are clear in our materials about the number of acres to be cleared. So that is in there. I will also state for the record that Edward Pimental is our land use planning and zoning expert. He is not able to be here tonight, but his report is in the record. His report has concluded that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance, and in addition, the state energy plan.
My comment has, you know, there's no argument from me on, you know, development rights and what the parcel is zoned. My point of clarification is simply that a tree clearing activity on the order of 22 to 23 acres is not minimal adverse effects on the existing environment and ecology. That is all.
This is Carolyn, and I completely agree. And Karen, you were privy to our workshop. You can understand where these comments are coming from, and you certainly can appreciate Emily's desire to have you be a little more sensitive to what clearing 22.75 acres of trees is. You don't have to comment, and you don't have to like it. It's just a pure fact. You heard what we were saying, and you're right. This is a commercial property. You guys have the right to proceed. I don't see any value when you're disagreeing with Emily's request that you be sensitive about what you're doing there.
And let me be, let me be clear. My comments were strictly in the view of what this application has to demonstrate to this board, to the town of Hopkinton, in order to obtain a proper approval. That aside, I did listen in to the reforestation discussion. I appreciate the town's concerns. I get that. I have a degree in environmental policy. I spent a great deal of my career in environmental science. I get it. But I also have to say that a property owner has the right to develop their property. And as long as, as in this case, they're following all of the guidelines that are set forth by the town, that that project, that application should be able to move forward. I think that's just, that's the only point I was trying to make.
Got it. I hear both perspectives. This isn't a philosophy lesson. I get it. Let's move on. I will comment that I appreciate, and I comment on Emily's perspective. I agree with her completely.
I have a question for Nicole.
Yes.
Now, I live just up the street from there, so I'm familiar with the property. 10 acres of my property is an afforestation program. The DEM and Rhode Island, I think it's Rhode Island Forestry Division, they come every two years to inspect my property. Their first question is, what have I done to do away with the Russian olive and the other invasive growth that's in this neighborhood? Now, so that we're all on the same page. Now, I agree with everybody else about the deforestation and cutting down a lot of trees if we can avoid that. That's great. But do you know the percentage of Russian olive and invasive shrubberies that are on that property? So that everybody in the audience doesn't think we're cutting big trees down. There's a lot of that property that's just shrubs that have grown up, and most of them the state wants to get rid of anyway.
Right. So I would actually defer that question to Mark Tremblay. He's on the phone as well. He conducted, he's from Land Management Service. He's a forester, and he conducted a forest assessment of that and can provide you some more details. My understanding it is that there is a heavy presence of invasive plants that are there, that it's not old growth forest, that it's all areas that are being reforested. But he can provide some more detail. Mark, are you available to provide some additional details to Ron's question?
Yes, press star nine, please. All right, and press star six. And please state your name for the record.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mark Tremblay. Yes, I can respond to your question about the non-native invasives. About, I'd say about 90% of that site is heavily infested. The only site that's not too bad with invasives is the south, southern end of the site on that slope. But the field in the northwest corner with all the cedars, there's a lot of invasive autumn olive and multiflora rose growing up in there. And then you get up, I mean, it's quite a battle getting through the thickets. To get up onto the hill from there, it's very thick with invasives throughout the whole central and northern portion of the properties surrounding what used to be an old farm site at the very northern end of the property, abutting 95. And that's likely where a lot of these invasive plants came from, basically spread out through these old fields along the old stone walls. The, so a lot of the vegetation is, and I guess the term is, the understory is compromised with these invasive plants.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay.
And I just want to highlight that the southern end of the site that Mark was talking about is the same area that Natural Resources Services had identified as also from a habitat perspective. And it is where development will not be occurring. So the area where there will not be tree clearing and any solar equipment is that area where the better forest is found and where there's better habitat for wildlife.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Planning Board members, any other questions for this expert? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Can we move on to the next one, please?
Yes. Next up, John Carter from John C. Carter &amp; Company. You're a designer of landscaping.
Press star nine, please. John, please press star nine and then star six, please.
John, go ahead.
John, please press star nine and then star six.
Hi, this is Ryan Flomo from Reddy. John's having trouble with the phone.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm not on a, I was not on a phone. I was on the computer. And it wouldn't let me. So if it's good for me to speak, I'll continue.
Yep.
Thank you. For the record, John Carter, I'm a registered landscape architect. I was hired by Revity to assist them in assessing the visual impacts of this proposed project. So to do that, and I know you folks on the board are quite familiar with it, but to give it some context, I'd like to just briefly walk through the site. So the site is accessible only one way, and that's through Gray Lane, which travels through the industrial park, and then dead ends at this site when it reaches Route 95 corridor. On the way into the site, you pass an existing solar farm that abuts this site on the southern border and a little bit on the western border. To the northwest of the site is abutted by the Route 95 corridor. Existing conditions over there consist of a pretty thick vegetated cover of primarily red cedars. There's a few deciduous trees mixed in. There is an opening of maybe 600 feet where along the highway where there's no, where there's body vegetation. But as you continue north and northeast of that, it's quite thick. To the northeast of the site is a couple of wetland complexes. And if you have my plan, my landscape plan, it would be on sheet number one. All of this would be described. And then that area is, part of it is wetland, and the rest of it is very, very heavily forested. And then as we continue south, there's an existing house about 615 feet south of where the nearest panel would be. And there's about 450 feet of existing vegetation, thick overstory and understory between that house and this proposed project. And including in that, included in that is a wetland complex. So that area would be off limits to any future clearing. There is an area along Route 3, which is the easterly side of this project, where the project and Route 3 get fairly close together. The closest panel is maybe 150 feet. And that area is cleared a little bit. There's a billboard in there, and the state, I believe, or the town, whoever owns that, has cleared back into that a little bit. So that's the first area we looked at, that there might be any potential visual impact. And the impact would be really from people coming down Frontier Road, possibly traveling onto the North on Route 3 or South on Route 3, if they could see through. There is existing vegetation, but the panels are set back, the fence is set back 60 feet or approximately from the property line. And we'll propose planting evergreens in that area, and we'll do a specific planting plan. Forward, but that's an area that there's a possibility of seeing the solar farm. Obviously, the main issue, and I heard it from the chairman, is a view from the highway. So one of the things we did on, and it's demonstrated on sheet two of our plans, is we drew a couple of cross-sections. You can see them on sheet one. There's cross-section one and cross-section two. And we took them basically from the eye of a car traveling south and the eye of a car traveling north on Route 95. The purpose of those really is just to demonstrate to you and to us as we address this what exactly we're looking at in terms of topography, vegetation, and so forth. So you could see on the, on the cross-section one that the topography rises in basically a easterly direction. And it goes from around 50 or 60 feet elevation up to a high of maybe 130 to 140 feet elevation. So there's quite a rise in that direction. But then we took the transect all the way through to Route 3, and you can see that there's, where we drew the transect, there's significant vegetation. We said 160 feet at that point. Some of the weather, most of which is wetland, so it won't be altered. And then the road, Main Street, is actually down below the height of this hill. So I don't think, in my opinion, that you're going to be able to see in and see anything from that location. Cross-section two, we just wanted to demonstrate the relationship between the highway and the topography of this proposed solar development. And you can see on section two, on sheet two, reading from the right to the left, the right is Route 95 southbound. And you can see the topography rises slightly, and then it begins to drop down. So the only potential impact would be on the slope that is rising from the highway up to the peak. And then as it drops down, it would be out of slope. So that pretty much leaves this area of 600 feet approximately along the highway that's open presently, where you can see into the site. And I know Mark Tremblay explained the forest cover and the tree cover. I know that there was talk about an invasive Russian olive out there and so forth. I walked the site. I walked most of it. And there's probably approximately six or 10 acres in what would be the kind of westerly corner where it abuts Gray Lane. It's a field, and it's a successional field, and it's typical of them in addition to all the Russian olive and honeysuckle and other invasives coming in. There's a lot of red cedar, the Juniperis virginiana, which is the native red cedar. And that's one of the first plants to come into the field. There's probably, and I'm going to give an educated guess, there's probably close to 75 or 100 of those out there. They vary in sizes. It's a plant that's easily transplantable. And I'm speaking from both, you know, the literature, but I also speak from personal experience. I worked on a project in South Kingston that abuts Route 1, the South County Commons. And we transplanted, I believe the number was 180 of those, out of the field and lined them up along the property line. And you can go by there and look at it now. It's a very effective buffer. It's 20 years probably in the ground. The plants are healthy and continuing to grow. You can see underneath them, but that's because the shopping center, the development owners threw them all up. But if they weren't groomed up, you'd see they were advanced green. So our proposal is to do the same thing along this Route 95 corridor. And you can see the area that we labeled as, on my plan on sheet one, area supplemental planting A. And it's green, and it's extensive on the highway where it's open and see through it. And the intent is to do, in addition to the cedars, to do kind of a layered planting. And if you go to sheet three, you'll see that we have a drawing that's called Buffer Plantings A. It's basically a plan view and an elevation view. And it demonstrates approximately, because this is an organic system that we're going to develop, of putting in a buffer, because the eye is towards this thing maturing and becoming effective, more effective, and as time goes on. But it would be a mixture of the red cedar, understory shrubs. And we've listed a plant schedule where we've explained what we would be proposing, the Viburnum, the Bayberry, and the Heathberry, and understory shrubs, the red cedar, and then proposing a green giant cultivar, not variety. Because it's a deer-resistant variety, and because in case we can't do this entirely with the cedar trees, we want to have other evergreens that would fit the bill. They would, they would grow to a significant enough height and width to block the view. So the proposal is to screen that over there with planting, such as I described. We did do, on the left side of sheet three, there's three photographs. And the top photograph, I took these three photographs. The top one is looking at the site and see the vegetation, primarily cedar tree, and next to some deciduous. The middle photograph is standing on the edge of the highway, looking at the site. And that's where the gap is. And you can see the trees in the background, but they're going to be removed. So those are the trees we're proposing to move to the foreground and plant along the, along the property line. And that's the third photograph, which is a photo rendering of what that exact same spot would look like when we plug these trees and shrubs into it. So that's the proposal for landscape screening. And I'm available to answer any questions that I'm sure you'll have.
Planning Board members, any questions for this expert?
No questions. No questions?
This is Carolyn, looking at sheet three.
Yes.
The middle picture, before not screened by existing vegetation. So this is an area abutting the highway? Is that what you?
Yes. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay. Are you asking me about the photographs or the sketch? I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the photograph.
Yes.
The center picture where it says before not screened by existing vegetation.
That's right. Yes. So that's me standing on the edge of the highway and looking into the site. In the middle photograph, you can see is open, and I can see into the site. That low lying grasses and things you see, that's all in the area of the proposed panels, and it'll be removed. The bottom, bottom photo rendered photograph just shows that same opening filled in with the red cedars.
Okay, I'm probably not understanding the concept. But from the way I'm looking at this, with my limited imagination, my thought is, do we have to remove all those trees to have what we're having in the bottom after the screening? And how much of that would tend is state land? How much?
Well, I can, I can answer the two questions. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt if I interrupted. Okay, the, the first question, do you have to remove all of the trees? We can only remove the trees on the private property. So nothing in the street right away, in the state right of way will be touched, because it can't be. The answer is the same for, really for question two, because we can only plant on the private property. So the planting won't be, the additional buffering, which is essentially just planting a long row of evergreen and mixed shrub understory along the border between the project and the highway, will all be done on the private property. We can't plant on the state property either. So this is all on the private property.
Yeah, okay. I, I understand that. So the question is, you're removing trees to transplant trees. And I'm confused. I, you know, from a financial perspective, where's the value in that? So there are, these trees, the existing trees are too high and, and create a shading on the panels? So you have?
The, the trees, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. The trees that are going to be transplanted are in an area where they're going to be cut down. It's part of the clearing. So the option is either to cut them down and bring in some new nursery-grown transplants, which have a less likely, you know, they're not native to the area and so forth. And plus, you're cutting trees down and bringing new ones in. The idea is to transplant them, all that field area that's going to be cleared anyways, and use, reuse them along the side of the road as a screen.
I'm a big fan of repurposing trees. I appreciate that they're going to provide immediate coverage and well-rooted coverage. I get that. I guess what my question is, how many trees? It's the center picture where you're cutting down trees, and the bottom picture where you're transplanting trees. Is there some, it kind of seems like there's a process in there that might not need to be done. Do you have to clear all those trees that we're seeing to create the same kind of buffer? How, what is the width of the transplanted cedar? How, is it 25 feet? Is it 6 feet?
The what? I'm sorry. I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Okay, so we've got, we've got a left, left to right. I'm not concerned with that. My, my question is, is the bottom picture, that is a presentation of one row of transplanted cedars, which would be probably 6 feet thick?
Yeah, it, it, did you say thick? In terms of width? If you look at the, on sheet three where the photographs, and look to the right of that, you see I have that little planting plan that shows the proposed plants on it. It's just to the right, in the center, there's a, there's a plan view with the symbols for the plants. Then up above it is an elevation view that represents the straight on view of what that planting would look like.
Okay.
The plants, that, that proposed planting scheme that shows three to five understory shrubs, a cluster of two or three cedar trees, and then some understory shrub, is representative of what will be done along this buffer to establish an evergreen screen from the highway. So, so the trees, that's, that's a general, like, the spacing and numbers of trees that are going there.
Okay. All right. So the photo on the bottom?
Yes.
Is probably, it's a 10-year view, right?
I can't answer that. The, the intent would be to have the buffer be as significant as possible when it's put in. And, you know, it'll be, I, I don't, I can't answer exactly what that is. It's a, it's a general, you know, rendering of what, the density and so forth. And I think the height, if you look at the cross-sections, I don't think the height is going to be the limiting factor. I think that the density is going to be the limiting factor on whether, you know, cannot, whether it is or isn't able to be seen through, seen through, if it's opaque or not. So the intent would be to make this thing so it was opaque soon, not in 10 years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have your photo.
John, I have a few questions.
Yes.
So in the northwesterly corner of the project, where you have your supplemental plantings?
Yes.
In your photographs, how much of that is state property and state vegetation? And what I'm driving at here, and we'll get to that, we'll get to this in the next question, is I think on, on the previous project, we've already covered the ground of you don't get to take credit for vegetation that's not on your property. So in a couple of your diagrams, you're showing lots of vegetation, but if I'm interpreting this correctly, you don't control it. So if all this vegetation on the interstate was cut down, what does your project look like?
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you the honest answer, Al. I think that, 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 I agree with you. There's no, there's some areas in the northern corner of the site that's wetland and would be protected by the state. Kind of right where my label says cross-section two, that's delineated as wetland up there. So running down along the side of the, of the property where it abuts the highway, that's a very dense vegetation. You cannot see through that right now. If we were to plant somewhere, it would be behind that property, behind that vegetation, where it would be completely ineffective. And it would be competing, trying to grow with the vegetation that's there. I'm not going to, you know, put any, put any representation that I know the state's plans in the future. I am going to go out on a limb and say it's highly unlikely the state's going to come and cut all that down for no purpose whatsoever. I suppose if it was cut down, that then it would be, and it exposed the, the solar farm, then that would be something that would have to be addressed by the owners of the solar project. But if it happened in 10 years or 15 or 20 years, I see no benefit whatsoever to putting a bunch of plantings somewhere where nobody's going to see them and they're not going to do anything. And I don't even think there's going to, they're going to be able to prosper with all this mature vegetation joining it.
Well, this is certainly your area of expertise, but I might disagree on that particular topic. So listen, my point is this. You know my philosophy here. I don't want to see this project. I don't want to see it from 95. I thought I had made this point clear at the pre-application. I have to presume that vegetation that I can't control, that is, that the town cannot control, could be gone tomorrow. And if it's gone, to me, it appears that the entire northerly boundary of your project is exposed. So naturally, I'm looking for vegetation or screening along that northerly boundary. You've got panels right up against the boundary line. That's not really what I, I thought I had conveyed, that that really wasn't something that I was enthusiastic about. So that's where I'm coming from. I mean, I know that you're making the presumption that the vegetation is going to stay. Well, I have less faith in my state than you do. They've done some wacky things, especially proposals in this, right in this area. So my confidence is a little bit shaken. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from. I don't want to belabor the point. I, I don't think there's enough screening on the north side. You're blessed with the fact that we don't have to have this discussion on the other boundaries. But along this northerly boundary, and I'll just take a moment to say that I know that some of my colleagues consider the interstate viewscape as a throwaway. They don't care about it. They feel that, you know, people traveling along the interstate, we don't, we don't have to care about them. Well, I disagree adamantly. The viewscape from 95, as it comes through my community, is very important to me. And I would like to do everything I can to maintain it. So I consider that viewscape as important as the viewscape from any of our local road networks. And I've said it.
Yes.
Jim Lamphier, Town Planner. John, I had a couple of questions for you. First of all, on the sheet number three, where you have the plants that are to be brought in, I am normally accustomed to seeing a quantity with, with that, and also a diagram, a planting schedule, if you will. I don't see you committing to any specific number of those plants. How do we know when you're done with the landscaping?
Well, here, so it, after this meeting, I'm sure there will be some revisions. And we can do a planting plan with quantities, sizes. We have a plant schedule, and we have a detail that effectively explains it. And we could quantify that. And so we all agree, you know, this is the number of plants that are going to be put in. But because of the level of this review and submission, I think that's accurate, and we could look at it, and we could count it off this plan. But I understand what you're asking for, and yes, we typically would do, this is not a plan intended to be handed to a contractor either. So we would do a planting plan that would, would, you would be able to look at. And if you approved it, that would be the plan that everybody was held to.
Okay. John, my other question is, the vegetation, vegetative buffer B, which is in close proximity to Frontier Road. I noticed on the site plan for the project, they are, they seem to be using that particular area as a grassed area to access the pond B, which is up in the northern part. And it looks to me, from your landscape plan, we don't see it on the site plan, but when I, when I go back and forth between the landscape plan and the site plan, it appears to me that vegetative buffer B is going to block the access to that pond.
Well, I'm going to, yeah, so with all due respect, I'm going to pass that on to Dave Russo. on to uh Dave Russo. If if it, I I I think there's a lot of area there and we can get them both to work. I might have missed that because I don't have that uh access. I have the gravel access road, the crushstone access road coming in along the south. Um, but there's plenty of space there from the fence to the uh property line is like sixty feet. So I'm sure we'll be able to plant on one side, and if if the intent is to drive across grass, uh, and they need ten or twelve feet of width to do that, there's plenty of room to do both. I'll I'll coordinate and make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I was looking at sheet number five uh on the uh site plan.
Okay.
Attorney Browning, could we unmute Dave Russo?
Yep.
Thank you.
One second.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, to answer your question, Jim, in that area, there there is a planting buffer strip, but there is, um, it's probably just a little, because of the scale, the drawings, it looks like there may not be a lot of room, but there's, there's enough room to get an access vehicle um back to that area as needed. And and they could actually go inside the fence or outside the fence to get back there. Um, but there, there's enough room.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you. Anything else for this expert? Planning board.
This is Carolyn.
Sorry, go ahead.
This is Carolyn. I have a question, David Russo. Um, we've got an access road that goes all the way from Gray Lane out through. And I, I, my question is, uh, which one is, would be your primary access point for construction?
Uh, for construction, I mean, they they'd both have to be utilized, um, because there is construction on, in both areas of the site, and following construction for, you know, address purposes, that the main street side would be there, considered their primary. I mean, from a construction perspective, especially if they're doing uh site work and they're going on Route ninety-five, it's much easier and quicker and better for the roadway system if they just get off onto Main Street and get on the highway. Um, otherwise, they're gonna be traversing down Gray Lane, back around, and then up Main Street. So it's a quicker route um to get, just jump on the highway right there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, so my thought on that is that I would like to incorporate some kind of a landscaping plan so that access road that's on Route three isn't so exposed.
Yeah, we we can look at that with John Carter and his plan. I mean, I know he has plantings over there. Um, now, the other item is that the roadway, it it does have some angles to it in that area because it's following, um, there's a slope over there, and we're trying our best to follow almost the toe of the slope in that area. So it, it does have some straight, um, you know, when you enter it, it's a little bit straight, and then it does jog left. So visually, when you're driving by it, that jog in the landscaping um should have some visual buffer into the site because of that jog. Um, you know, so and there's, there's ample room over there if we, you know, on John Carter's plan, if we wanna pull that buffer a little further down to that corner, but yeah, I think what John's showing will accomplish uh what you're speaking about. And where the roadway connects to Main Street, um, you know, there is a cemetery to the north of the road that within twenty-five feet, we're not touching, so all that vegetation will remain. And then there is, um, you know, there's a wetland to the south uh with a fifty-foot buffer, and our limit of work is actually pulled off that, that buffer, um, right along the buffer to the stream system down there. So there is quite a bit of vegetation that's gonna hug that entrance road, and then with the landscape buffer behind it should, should provide some visual buffering.
Okay. I just don't want it to scream, hey, look, there's an access road to a solar field. We have a lot of that, and uh, you know, anything you guys can do to help minimize the impact of that visual going down Route three would be helpful.
We can take a look at it and see, I I understand what you're saying.
Uh, Al Diorio, I'd like to second that concern, please. Uh, I had the very same thought. I was wondering if you could increase the uh, some of the curves along that road, maybe that can be done with landscaping, I'm not sure. Uh, all I can visualize is yet another drive by this access road and the project just opens up in front of you. I'd, I'd rather really not see that if it's at all possible.
Understood.
Okay, anything else for the experts that have been called so far? Does council have other experts that you'd like to present?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Thomas Sweeney from Sweeney Real Estate and Appraisal. Uh, we ask that Mr. Sweeney be qualified as an expert uh in the uh area of uh real estate and property values.
Well, that's your representation, right?
Uh, yes, if you'd like me to go through Mr. Sweeney's resume, I can certainly do that.
I'm sorry, was that yes?
Uh, I I I'm sorry, we may have missed each other. Um, if you'd like me to go through Mr. Sweeney's resume in order to qualify him, I can certainly do that.
Uh, I believe that Mr. Sweeney has testified before this board previously. Is that be correct?
That is correct.
Consider it done.
Mr. Sweeney, please press star nine.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
Thomas Middle, initial O, Sweeney, S W E E N E Y.
Mr. Sweeney, um, you've submitted a report for purposes of tonight's hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in preparing that report, did you uh visit uh the site that we're discussing tonight?
I did, I inspected uh from Main Street uh down to the terminus of Gray's, Gray's Lane, and then on Interstate ninety-five too.
And could you just walk us through very briefly what else you did or what other documents you reviewed in preparing your report?
Uh, I reviewed the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. I looked at all of the uses in the area. Uh, as in previous testimony before this board, I referenced uh certain studies that have been conducted in other parts of the country, uh, which up until October of this year were the most uh complete studies on the impacts of solar on adjacent property values. Uh, at the end of October, or in October of this year, Dr. Corey Lang and an associate from URI presented a paper, uh, staff giving their uh opinion as to uh the impact of solar on surrounding property values, specifically residential. Uh, I listened to both, both the webinar that Dr. Lang presented and uh reviewed the document. In addition to that, I uh spent about an hour on the phone with Dr. Lang, asking him some questions that that I wanted to try and get a better understanding uh of how far he was with the study. Did he think it was completed? And what was his next step? Um, he has presented it, it is out for peer review right now. Uh, he does not consider it, consider it to be complete, he's still working on other things, um, and he is also looking at further studies, uh, primarily, one that interests me is that in his study at this point, uh, he does not specifically address the impact of screening on uh what it, on the impact on surrounding properties. Uh, he is going to look at that in a future study. Uh, but primarily, the original studies all indicate that there is, uh, with proper screening, there is no negative impact on uh surrounding property values if the screening is proper from solar properties arrays. Uh, Dr. Lang's study did come out and say that for uh industrial and rural, and I would consider this property, uh, while not specifically industrial, it is in the business slash industrial park, to fall within this category, that there is no impact of solar arrays on surrounding property values when they're situated in this type of area. Again, I believe the screening also adds to that conclusion. So based upon all of those reviews of those documents, talking to Dr. Lang and reviewing his document, uh, it's my opinion that there is no negative impact, there will be no negative impact on surrounding property values uh based upon uh this plan moving forward.
And just so we're clear, Mr. Sweeney, uh, you did in fact review the, the plan sets uh that were submitted as a part of this application, correct?
I I did, and I've uh reviewed them, and not only that, but listened to the testimony tonight by all of the other experts.
And just to conclude quickly, um, is it your expert opinion that the granting of uh this DPR application will not substantially or permanently injure the appropriate use of the property in the surrounding area or the zoning district?
Uh, that is correct. I think it's compatible, it is a permitted use, and with the proposals for screening that have been described, uh, it will have no negative impact on any of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, I have no other questions.
Very good, thank you very much. Plenary board members, questions for this expert?
No questions.
Um, this is Carolyn, I, I, I just have a question for Mr. Sweeney. Um, his testimony is that, uh, considering the landscape planning that's been presented, he uh agrees that there's no impact on property values. I would like him to acknowledge the recommendations that's been made by you, Al, regarding the additional buffer requirement along ninety-five, and then the uh request to have the additional buffering on Route three for that access road.
Um, Miss Lee, I'm not, I I would think if those are added to what is proposed, uh, it can only be a good thing. Uh, my opinion is that as proposed, there is no negative impact. So if you're adding that, those things to what is already proposed, uh, it can only uh benefit the project.
Carolyn, does that address?
Yeah, it does.
Great. Anything else for this expert?
This is Emily, I have a question. Um, are there elements of the studies you cited that describe impacts to surrounding areas when the project in question is not the first solar installation to go in to an area, to a neighborhood, um, and where, as is the case with this project, there's already an installation in the adjacent parcel and one across the street?
Uh, because my opinion on this one is specific to this project, the existence of another solar array in an industrial area, in my opinion, neither, they're both there, the use already exists in the area, uh, so you're not introducing a use into, to the area. Um, none of the studies, without getting into specific studies, I don't know if they looked at one that's a mile away or a half a mile away. I I can't specifically answer that question.
Good, anything else for this app, uh, this expert, I'm sorry. Okay, council, anything else from your end?
Two quick items, I just wanna state that the Rhode Island Historic Preservation Heritage Committee uh was also provided with a copy of the application for their review. Uh, there's a letter uh that we submitted stating that there is no impact. Um, also, I think it's been mentioned before, but I'll just state Scott Rabidou from Natural Resource Services um did submit a wetlands, I'm sorry, did evaluate the property for the purposes of wetlands. I believe that was discussed um in the Sage Environmental Report. Uh, Mr. Rabidou is here uh to answer any questions. And with that, that's all we have.
Very good, thank you. So planning board members, any questions overall before I go to public comment?
Nothing from Carolyn, nothing, nothing here.
Okay, no hands? Good.
No, not here.
We have one comment from the public.
Uh, we'll get to that in just a moment. Jim, anything on your end? Okay, so let's open it up for uh public comment. Once again, this is a development plan review, uh, raise your hand.
Hi, it's Eric Bibler, can you hear me?
Yep.
Just have a couple of quick questions for the developers, experts through the chair, if you will.
Yes.
Okay. Um, first of all, I see that the developers provided a decommissioning estimate from Vinagro Associates. Um, is Vinagro Associates a former or current business partner of Southern Sky or Revity or Mr. Palumbo?
Uh, with all due respect, uh, Mr. Bibler, um, this is Attorney Browning, um, that um is not uh the decommissioning estimate that has been submitted as part of the application to which we would expect to be considered. The Vinagro estimate is simply a supporting document um to demonstrate that the decommissioning estimate, which we did provide as required by our engineer, Dupree Engineering, um, is um, is sufficient and adequate.
So will there be a decommissioning estimate that is uh specific to this project, provided at a later date?
No, that's already been provided, was provided by Dupree Engineering.
Okay, but I recall that on the Frontier Road project, you um provided, forgot the name of the company, We Recycle Now, you provided a, a letter from We Recycle Now that discussed the cost of decommissioning panels and made an estimate based on the International Renewable Energy Association uh data, made some estimates about the life of the panels and how many might need to be, uh, how many might still be sold at some future date, and how many might need, might be broken and all that. So I don't see any of that here in this project.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Please.
Uh, no, that was not provided for this project. Um, we learned a lot going through the Frontier Road um development, and um the process for evaluating decommissioning um in the town um does not require that um information to be submitted. Um, so that's why it was not submitted this time.
Okay, so this letter from Vinagro that doesn't relate specifically to this project um indicates that um just has almost like a footnote or something, and it says that the solar panel weight, the cost of disposing of the solar panel waste is one hundred dollars per ton, correct?
Um, I don't have the document in front of me, I'd have to find it, but I'm not.
Well, I I do have the document in front of me, that's what it says, but um, my point is this, that um it doesn't say how the solar panels will be disposed of. So if it's gonna cost a hundred dollars per ton to quote dispose of them, are they going to be uh put into a landfill?
Again, the, the Vinagro estimate is not the correct decommissioning estimate you should be looking at. The correct estimate for you to look at is the Dupree Engineering decommissioning.
Well, I didn't see anything on the Dupree Engineering estimate that told me how much it was gonna cost to dispose of the panels, maybe I missed it. You wanna direct me to that?
I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Bibler, you'd have to review that estimate, I don't, I'm not.
Well, I did, I'm just telling you, I did review the estimate, and I didn't see anything on there that told me the cost of uh disposing of solar panels. And you're telling me I should look to that for that number, and I don't see it.
Okay.
So you don't have a cost for the, you don't have anything for the planning board or the town of Hopkinton to tell us what it's gonna, you know, you don't have any provision in Dupree, in the Dupree estimate for the cost of disposing of the panels? Is that correct?
I, Mr. Bibler, the, the, I'm not gonna go line for line of the decommissioning estimate. The process is this, and Mr. Chair, please correct me if I'm wrong, the um, the decommissioning estimate submitted by Dupree uh would be reviewed by the town. would be reviewed by the town's engineer, and a number would be, and the decommission estimate by Dupree would be confirmed by the town's engineer. The town will go through the process that you're insinuating now.
I'm not insinuating anything.
That at this point is not something that I believe is appropriate for this stage of the hearing.
Okay, I'm just, well, I'm just trying to understand the material that you did submit.
Let me interject.
Yeah.
Eric, I hear your concern.
Yeah.
Counsel, I hear your response. You are probably correct. This may not be the right time, but I want to caution you that we're going to revisit this specific topic at some point in the future.
Okay.
If you care to defer it to another time, I'm sure that Mr. Bibler is going to raise the question again, at which point I will insist on an answer. So if you'd like to do that at another time, that's perfectly okay with me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do that, and as long as, you know, when I'm sitting here in the peanut gallery, it's not always, it's not always possible to tell when there will be another opportunity to address these things, and sometimes with remote hearings, even you try to raise your hand and you can't get recognized, so I appreciate that.
I understand. Be assured that, again, this is going to be deferred out to Crossman for confirmation.
That was a question I had, if we were going to go through that.
You'll have another opportunity to ask that question.
Okay, so then I just have one last thing. I just want to flag for that future consideration and for the Planning Board, in the Frontier proposal, one of the things that I tried to get back in and talk about and couldn't, couldn't, you know, I had commented and I wanted, I asked for a question, I got an answer, I wanted to respond. In the estimate that was provided in that instance from this solar panel recycler, We Recycle Now, I believe that he provided an estimate that the cost of recycling a panel was approximately $44. And then there was another calculation of salvage value based on some estimates of numbers of panels that might be salvaged, that they could be sold for $11. So that's obviously a $55 swing per panel times thousands of panels in terms of estimating the future liability and the future cost. And I'm just flagging that issue because Crossman had one idea that it considered quote unquote reasonable for the number of panels that might be sold in the future versus might be broken and recycled. We Recycle Now had another estimate. I would submit to the Planning Board that no one knows what the regulations might be, no one knows if solar energy will be viable in 30 years, and nobody knows if any panels can be sold. Every time you sell one, it subtracts $55 from the cost of the decommissioning. That's a huge number. So I just want to submit to the Planning Board that when you do, when you do ask the opinion of Crossman, the absolute key question to ask them is if they have any possible way of knowing 30 years in the future if any solar panels can be salvaged and sold. Because if the answer is no, nobody can know that number. It's unknowable, and if this Planning Board wants to then, you know, ask Crossman, what is the worst case for the decommissioning estimate? I think that worst case has to assume that every single panel has to be recycled at a cost of $44, and there's a cost attached to that. I think the methodology this time around was extremely flawed. I don't think you have to do it the same way just because you did it that way last time. And I really hope that the conversation with Crossman focuses on whether or not they have any confidence in the number of panels that they might assume to be sold, because I think that answer is clearly no. Nobody can know that answer. That's, that's, that's the part of the debate I want to have taken care of by our town engineer and the Planning Board, okay? I'd like to have it addressed in the future. Thank you.
Got it.
This is Carolyn. Can I field a comment, please?
Yep, go right ahead.
I, I think I'm very thankful for the work that Crossman did. I believe, don't have a short memory, that we did cover the unknowns for the 25 and 30-year view. And I believe what Eric's concern is, is redundant to issues that the Planning Board raised while we were having our decommissioning discussion with the client and with Crossman. And it's my personal opinion that the client, the attorney, Mr. Palumbo, and the Planning Board did a super job trying to cover the bases in conjunction with the consultation with Crossman, who did a fabulous job. And I also think knowing that Crossman Engineering voiced the fact that the unknowns exist for 30 years down the road automatically answer Eric's question regarding the future of recyclable panels. We have limited tools to work with in this day and age of 2020, and I think we did a great job working with what we have. I would propose that concerns brought by Eric possibly could be met by an expert if Eric could recommend or bring to a meeting an expert on solar panel recycling to help us grasp what we're working with. That would be very helpful. So maybe there's a resource out there for Eric who can come to a meeting and share with us. Thank you.
Hey, very good. Good idea.
Mr. Bibler would like to respond.
Okay, Eric, you gotta keep it short, right?
Sorry. Very quickly, I'm not criticizing anything that the Planning Board did or didn't do. I'm not criticizing Crossman with that comment. I have a risk analysis background, and this clearly is a situation where you have to consider different scenarios, right? The cost of the decommissioning flows out of the assumptions that you make. And my point is, the question that never got answered, asked and answered of Crossman, in my opinion, and the question that I would like answered by Crossman, I don't need to bring another expert in here. The question is, can Crossman assure the Planning Board that any number of solar panels 30 years from now can actually be sold for $11 apiece? And I think that answer honestly has to be answered no. There, no one standing here today can say that there's any, that solar will be viable 30 years from now. We didn't have the internet 30 years ago, you know? So I just think that the, for the town's risk profile, the risk question, not, not, not whether or not you can sell one for $11 today and that's conservative and stuff, the question as it relates to risk is whether or not any expert on planet Earth can tell the Planning Board that 20%, 50%, or 70% can be resold at a profit. And I think that answer is no, and I would like, I would like the question to be asked of Crossman whether they can attest to that. In fact, I believe that one of the, I believe that Crossman actually said to the Planning Board that he couldn't find anybody to attest to that. And it kind of went over our heads, and I think if the answer is no, and we're assessing our risk, then our worst case is that every one of them needs to be recycled, because that's the way regulation is headed. And if you can't zero out a $50 cost, then it's going to come home to roost, and that's it. I just want Crossman to tell us, can they promise us that 10%, 20%, 50%, or any number can be sold? And I think the answer is no, but I will live with Crossman's answer. I just want the question asked, you know, and as the, you know, as the assumption that's building the estimate. That's all.
Very good. Yep, thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience?
Yes. Please state your name for the record. I'm going to read the last four digits, 8222.
Hi, this is Joe Moro, Old Depot Road. How's everyone doing?
Doing well.
Good. I just want to go back to an important point that Al mentioned. And when you're talking about the state property on the northerly boundary with the vegetation that's currently there, my suggestion would be, as a condition of approval of this project, if it's five years, 10 years, whatever it is, if the state removes any of that vegetation that is currently there, then the owner of the solar project should be responsible to install a similar buffer to decrease the visibility from 95. That's, that's my first point. My second point is, and I haven't heard this brought up, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate time, work schedule. We talked about Frontier Road tonight across the street, and there's still a debate going on as far as the attorney is concerned, as far as the developer can work anytime they want on a Saturday. So I think we need to have, as a condition of approval, a work schedule for this particular project. And my last point is concerning real estate values. I've been studying this since June of 2018, and I've looked at so many sites, I've talked to real estate agents about the impact on real estate. All of these projects are, that have residential homes in that area, and we were told tonight there is one house within 600 feet. They have an impact on the resale value of that particular home and the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. My realtor told me that we bought a house from, he said, Joe, if there was solar across the street from your house, the first thing people would ask is, what is over there in that field? And when I tell them it's solar, he said 99% of the people will walk away. That 1% that really loves your house is going to lowball your price. So I don't understand how we can say it has zero impact on real estate property. That's my last point, and thanks again for what you guys do.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else in the public?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ralph Palumbo.
Yes, Ralph.
Yeah. So some of the information that Eric was looking for is in Dupree's report. You just have to look at the details of the disposal. And Eric has brought up on numerous occasions the pointing out that Mr. Vinagro is a business partner of mine. He is. He's co-invested in land opportunities with me. There's nothing nefarious about it. It's a legal investment, and we've done that for a long time. But he's, he's an expert in demolition and decommissioning. And I have no sway over him on how he evaluates process and prices a job. And I understand that that's what the insinuation is, but I don't have any sway on him. Make that clear. And he's also an expert in disposal and has his own disposal and demolition yard. So he's, he's expert in these things. So I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you for the time.
Very good. Thank you. So have we all had our discussion for this this evening? I'm thinking the answer is yes. I'm also thinking that Jim advises me that this has not undergone a Crossman review yet. So my recommendation would be, it gets handed over to Crossman for their independent review and report back to the Planning Board.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question about that?
Go right ahead.
The applicant is certainly accepting of a peer review, but given the fact that I'm hearing there needs to be possibly some changes to the plans, given the feedback we got tonight, could I request that the applicant, excuse me, have a chance to make those changes and then submit the revised plans to the town and to Crossman? So Crossman doesn't end up reviewing a set of plans that's going to be changed.
That certainly sounds like a wonderful idea. I would only ask that once the revised plans are made, that they're funneled through the Planning Department so that we have the latest and greatest version, and we can be assured that Crossman is also getting that version of the map. Yes?
Understood. Yes. And one other small request, in terms of budgeting, is it possible to have Crossman or whoever is going to be reviewing this provide us with a estimate of costs, just so that my client can have a handle on future expectations as they are going to be responsible for the cost?
You're referring now to the cost of the independent review?
Correct. If we could just get a preliminary estimate upfront for budgeting, we would appreciate it.
I'm sure that can be handled. Do you want the opportunity to review that prior to it being submitted to Crossman? Prior to your project being submitted to Crossman? In other words, do you want to review that estimate in advance?
We would, but I expect the timing would be very tight, meaning if we could have it, we would, we will still be working on the plans to turn into the town. So the answer to the question is yes, but I don't expect there to be a delay.
So we'll ask Crossman for an estimate for their review. We'll get that to you for your consideration, and then you'll submit your revised plans?
Correct.
Okay. Jim, thoughts?
Jim Lafferty, a town planner. I would suggest that to facilitate this, for estimating purposes, we could have Crossman take a look at the plan that's put out there tonight, because any modifications would be, you know, relatively insignificant with the, you know, vis a vis the cost. So that's what I would suggest, is get the stuff over to Crossman and see if he can give you an estimate.
Respectfully, Jim, I hear that. I understand what you're saying, but I think we'd prefer to regroup, given all the feedback we've had tonight, and have a chance to talk about changes that we want to make, again, so that we can come in with a fresh, clean set of plans through planning to the peer reviewer, if that's okay.
Certainly your decision, as long as you can appreciate that, you know, we'll just have to wait until you revise your plans before we go to Crossman for an estimate. Yes?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Jim Lafferty, a town planner, again, along those lines, I don't have any issue with that, but we have to be cognizant that the seven-month timeframe for an approval here takes us up to December the 6th. So we can, we can bring this back December the 2nd to the next Planning Board meeting, or the applicant could grant us a certain time period tonight for an extension, or they could submit a letter to us in advance of the meeting, you know, allowing, granting an extension. I don't, I really don't want to put this matter on a future agenda merely for the purpose of getting an extension. But it appears to me that there's a considerable amount of work left to be done on this project, and we're going to go beyond December the 6th, so whatever the applicant's willing to give us now would be appreciated.
Yes, we've worked with the town in the past. We would, we would continue to do that.
So yes, that's an acknowledgement that we're going to get an extension. Do you care to put something on the table now, or do you want to wait? I don't want to, let me profess, I don't want to find myself in the same situation that we were last time issuing extensions for two weeks at a time, right? We're coming into an even more dynamic season than we were last time around, so let's please take that into account.
Sure. I would suggest that this matter be continued to the next meeting date of 12/2. And at that time, if there's an extension that's needed, we can discuss that and give one that's appropriate.
Jim Lafferty, a town planner. I, I think where I, where I see us leaving off here is we can't do too much even with an estimate from Crossman, let alone get into the peer review, until you folks, right, come back with a revised set of plans. Is that, is that what I just heard? So we got to wait for you to come up with some revised plans? And we don't know how long that's going to take, right?
So Jim, this is Ralph. I think all the points you're making are good points. So Crossman can make their estimate off of the plan that exists today, okay? And if there are modifications, you can modify his estimate to make it simple and efficient. And of course, he has done these, you know, evaluations before so that the basic, primary footprint of the project is on this plan used today. So that's fine. Just so we can facilitate your forward. And secondly, let me regroup with my team, and maybe we'll call you and get a more specific extension plan, as I got to kind of understand it a little bit better, Jim. So, but if we can do that, instead of struggling through it tonight, I think it's the best way to do it, okay?
That's fair enough with me, Ralph. We'll work with you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm delighted to hear that kind of conversation. What's our window again, though?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, December the sixth, we have to have a decision box.
Okay, so wait a minute. I suddenly find myself in the box again. If we're going to meet on December second, and there's a blizzard, I've got five days to render a decision. Am I missing something?
Okay, no, it's my understanding, Mr. Palumbo just said that we can get an estimate based upon the plans that are here today. So, so as soon as I get that estimate, I will give it to Ralph. Now, um, they als, I believe I also heard them say that they're gonna huddle together, discuss the changes, and he's gonna give me, he's gonna give me an extension, uh, plan, if you will. That, after they huddle, right, they're gonna, they're gonna maybe come up with, you know, maybe a couple of months, two, two or three months, that's, that's what I heard Ralph just say. So we're waiting for phone calls from these people after they consult with, as a team.
So we don't have, please correct me if I'm mistaken, I don't have to worry about the December seventh deadline looming on the horizon, just in the eventuality that we don't get to meet on December second?
Again, I, I just want to reiterate that, I, I really don't want to put this on a December second agenda merely for the purpose of getting an extension, when their attorneys and, and whatnot can give me an email telling me what they're willing to grant us. I mean, if we can conduct business, uh, over the phone and via email, then we don't have to come back to the planning board until there's really something substantive for the planning board to consider. Because I don't have really any time to waste.
Yeah, yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I think that's accurate, and I only need a day or two, before the week's over, some of my team will circle back with Mr. Lafferty and put together a schedule for the extended time. So I, I'm committing to extend, I'm not gonna, not gonna hold, uh, strictly to the December second, if that's what you're asking me. Not gonna do that, and I think, you know, to go to January, uh, or greater, if my team, we, we think it's, you know, it's in the best interest of, of all of us, and we'll, we'll get back to Jim before the week's out. It'll only take a day, I'm just asking for a day of discussion with my team, okay?
Of course, of course. The planning board need not be involved in the extension process. If it can be conducted through the planning office, I'm doing that, so I'm gonna leave it to you folks, and I'm not gonna worry about December seventh anymore.
Okay, that works for us.
Outstanding. So, uh, do we need, uh, any kind of motion here this evening to conclude business on this?
You could, uh, have a motion to, uh, go to peer review with Crossman.
Okay. Uh, planning board members, Bob, can I, can I entertain a motion to that effect?
Okay, I'll jump in. I'd like, go ahead, Carol.
Go ahead. No, you go.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we submit this through our planner's recommendation, that we go to a peer review and continue on from there.
Very good, I have a motion, do I have a second?
This is Carolyn, I'll second.
I have a second. Hearing none, all in favor? Deorio, yes?
Pearlwood, yes.
Light, yes.
Lindeloh, yes.
Shumshini, yes.
Right away?
Yep.
Very good. All right, listen, for the next two applications, uh, I will be recusing myself. For the very next application, I was involved in this project and continue to be involved, and for the subsequent application, the first item on the new business, I was involved in this project early on, it worked for the property owner, I am no longer involved in that project, but nonetheless, I have submitted notices of recusal for both of those projects, and I would, uh, request that Ron, uh, take the reins at this point and take us through the next two applications, if you would, Ron.
Yes, I'd be glad to. Good evening, everyone. The first one that we're gonna attack, let me just go over this and make sure I'm on the, the proper line here, and yes, I am, this is the Sarah Land Project. Now, do we have anybody from the applicant or their representatives present?
Yes.
Could we have some input from those people, please?
Dan, please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, Dan Lees?
Go ahead.
So I'm here, uh, thanks for having me here, I'm, I'm here to, uh, request an amendment to the plan that was set up for a three-lot subdivision, uh, changing that to a two-lot subdivision.
Okay, and it's, it's my understanding that the intent for this proposal is for you to build two houses, one for you and one for your son, it's a family interconnected sort of idea, not so much as, in, in, interconnected project-wise, but it's a family idea.
Yeah, exactly. Two separate lots, um, basically broke right down the middle, uh, splitting lots essentially in half, and, uh, yeah, it's gonna be two residential, uh, properties.
Okay. And it looks to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's an area that's, uh, proposed easement for detention basin. Is that correct?
It's already in place, uh, that was submitted with the prior plan, uh, it's gonna stay the same way, uh, the road's been put in, uh, I believe everything's been done on that, they've put the, uh, trap rock along the side, and everything's leading down into the, uh, drainage basin.
Okay, is there anything that you would like to add, Dan?
Uh, not really, uh, you know, pretty simple change from three lots to two, um, it's taken away the open space that was around the outside of that, um, we intend on maintaining the current grade that was, uh, set up, uh, when, uh, I guess at some point when they said you've got to regrade this, uh, basically gravel pit, so we intend on keeping that same grade, and, uh, actually, probably within a year, we're gonna start adding evergreens at the top of the hills, uh, for just protection, privacy.
Okay, yes, I, I agree, this looks pretty straightforward, we're looking at lot one at four-point-seven-one-four acres, and lot two at five-point-zero-zero-eight-seven-five acres, so it comes more into compliance with what RF R eighty was originally designed for. Uh, planning board members, any comments or questions?
Uh, Keith here, no questions.
This is Carolyn, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Same here, this is Emily, no questions.
Okay, thank you, planning board members. Uh, I'll defer to Jim, do we think we should be looking for a motion on this, or just a hail mary and say, go ahead, or how would you like to proceed?
Yes, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, yes, Ron, we'll need a motion to, uh, amend, um, the approved plan. So at some point, I'm gonna ask you to have a proposed, um, a motion to approve the revision to the approved, the final plan set dated October sixteenth, twenty-twenty, and someone will have to read the seven findings of fact that must be made, uh, to convert this, uh, three-lot cluster into a two-lot conventional subdivision. Um, I just remind the chair that maybe you might want to see, before you make this motion, you might want to see if there's any, uh, public comments on this out there.
Okay, very good, Jim, thank you. So Talia, if you will, will open us up to public comment, if anyone wishes to have some input on this. We'd, uh, we'd appreciate them using their time wisely.
We, nope, we don't have any hands.
Okay, we have no hands, Ron, so we're free to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Planning board members, we would like to entertain a motion. Have I been muted?
I think your wife muted you, Ron.
She's been trying to do that for forty-eight years.
Oh, there's a party coming up in a couple of years' time. I'll just, I, I'm- It's, uh, my recommendation that the planning board approve the proposed revision to the approved final plan dated October fifteenth, twenty-twenty, conditional to the obstacle paying the three-hundred dollars before the amendment to the approved plan, and upon the seven, created below. Number one, each subdivision shall be consistent with the requirements of the Hopington Comprehensive Community Plan and/or shall satisfactorily address the issues where there may be inconsistencies. Each lot, number two, each lot in the subdivision shall conform to the standards and provisions of the Hopington zoning ordinance. Number three, there will be no significant negative environmental impact for the proposed development as shown on the final plan, and with all required conditions of approval. Number four, the subdivision as proposed will not result in the creation of individual lots with such physical constraints to development, that building on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would be impractical. Number five, all proposed land developments and all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent legal access to a public street. Number six, each subdivision shall provide for safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular, traffic for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites, and for preservation of natural historical and cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. Finally, number seven, the design and location of streets, buildings, lots, utilities, drainage improvements, and other improvements in each subdivision shall minimize flooding and soil erosion.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, planning board members, what's your pleasure? I think we're in line for a vote here, we have a motion, we need a second.
Keith here, second motion.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I will say Pearlwood, yes.
Light, yes.
Lindeloh, yes.
Shumshini, yes.
Okay, thank you, planning board members, it sounds like we dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and if there's no other input from our planner, I think we're ready to move on to something else.
Nothing here, Ron, fine.
Okay, thank you, let me just make a notation on this, so I can file it away. Okay, done deal, congratulations, Dan. Okay, the next item. This is- Pre-application for a major land development project, Forte Boutique Energy System, Atlantic Solar LLC, Atlantic Control Systems Incorporated. It's for plat seven, lot thirty-two, plat ten, lot eighty-seven, plat eleven, lot thirty-five, Zero Main Street, Atlantic Solar LLC, and Atlantic Control Systems Incorporated. Do we have any, uh, any of the applicants, people present? Anyone who wishes to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Am I muted?
Nope.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Get your name to the record.
Yes, my name is Robert Craven, I represent the applicant, uh, Atlantic Solar, Zero Main Street, Hopington, for this pre-app review. Uh, in accordance with the sound advice from your town planner from the last meeting, uh, I will keep it to twenty minutes, uh, as, uh, you guys have a busy agenda. Um, this is a, uh, solar array along Route ninety-five, um, approximately four and a half, uh, megawatts AC, um, it is in an area that, uh, that, uh, is surrounded by some, uh, distant, uh, somewhat distant, uh, houses. Uh, we will address all of those issues, and I have, uh, some maps that I believe that should have been submitted to you folks, uh, through the planning office, uh, that show the distances between this for, uh, this, uh, solar array and, uh, and the, uh, surrounding neighbors. Uh, the engineering firm on this project is Woodward and Curran. Alan Benavides is the witness that I intend to present tonight. Alan has testified before, uh, multiple zoning planning boards and courts in the state of Rhode Island. He particularly has testified before this board last month, and before the town council on several occasions in reference to, uh, some, uh, relief granted by the town council. So without any further ado, Alan Benavides from Woodward and Curran.
Uh, have him, please press star nine. All right. And please press star six.
Great. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go, great. Super, hi, this is Alan Benavides from Woodward and Curran, I'm a senior vice president with the firm, been there for approximately twenty years, uh, civil PE registered in the state of Rhode Island, and our offices are at thirty-three Broad Street in Providence. Uh, to reiterate some of the basics that were touched on before I started, project's at Zero Main Street encompasses three parcels, ultimately, as we move through the process, hopefully, uh, those parcels will be combined, but currently consists of three parcels. Uh, the size of the project, approximately four and a half to five megawatts AC, and the lot size is twenty-nine-point-seven-three acres, so some, a little bit of basics. Uh, I did want to touch on just a little bit of project history, how we got to this point, uh, this is really the third evolution of these drawings. Uh, the project started out back in September of two thousand and eighteen, and they were heard before the planning board as part of the rezoning and comp plan change, so that was the very first version of the drawings. Um, that was in September of eighteen, in November of two thousand and eighteen, those drawings started through the, uh, town council and the rezoning comp plan change process. Uh, that process involved a number of meetings, uh, during those meetings, there was an evolution of the drawings to respond to comments either from the council or for, from the, uh, from the public, and ultimately, in March of twenty-twenty, uh, the zone change was approved. Uh, the zone change, uh, consisted of sixteen conditions or had sixteen conditions associated with it, and so what we've done is reflected in the drawings that were submitted in October to the planning board, the ones that you're now reviewing tonight, is we've updated the drawings, uh, on a couple of fronts, which I'll tou, touch on in a second, but one of them is to make sure that any of those sixteen comments that related to the civil engineering or to the drawings have been reflected into the, uh, drawings you're reviewing tonight. Uh, the two changes that are worth mentioning, one of them, there was a request to move some of the panels further from, uh, residential abutters, which was done, and the second thing, when we touch on the plans, I'll talk about, there was a requirement to put an eight-foot berm in in order to shield the particular resident, uh, that there were concerns that there would be, uh, visual impacts. So those are the changes that were, came about as part of that process. Um, you know, in the interest of, uh, time tonight, I'm gonna touch on two drawings that were submitted as part of the package. Uh, the first one, uh, is figure A, um, the, uh, existing conditions plan, uh, that was submitted, uh, as part of this, uh, application. Um, what you'll see on those drawings is that, uh, the project is located on Main Street, as I said earlier, and that's bounding on the north side of the site, and then on the south side of the site, uh, is Route ninety-five, and then there's residential abutters to either side, obviously zoned as, uh, commercial. Um, since the, the March twenty-twenty, um, uh, approval, uh, there's been quite a bit done on the existing conditions, so this drawing is essentially a new drawing, we have new topography, so Sorenzi Associates went out, they did a topographic survey, they did a property boundary survey, and they located, uh, the wetlands as part of this kind of updated drawing. So all that information is new from what we've seen in the past, and it'll be used as we make our way through the major land development process. So all that information is new from what we've seen in the past and will be used as we make our way through the major land development process. Um, if you look at the drawing, those of you who have it in front of you, um, you can see, uh, again, to the north, you can see Main Street, to the south, you can see Route ninety-five. You can see the three parcels, they're outlined in red, that, that are the extent of the solar array, those three parcels. Um, the, uh, wetlands are in kind of a beige color and are really located on the eastern and western, uh, boundaries of the parcel. Um, at this point, the project, the project site is largely undeveloped. It's, um, you know, generally wooded. And, uh, at this point, um, you know, there's really, uh, no other, um, development within the parcel. Uh, there's no floodplains on the parcel, there's no national heritage that have been identified in the parcel, no historic or archaeological also on the parcel. So that gives you a good, um, kind of overview of what the existing conditions are of the site. The second drawing that I'll touch on tonight is the proposed conditions drawing, and that is on, is figure five. Uh, the last drawing that was provided is part, is part of the, uh, of the submittal. And you can see the access road comes, excuse me, it's drawing. Um, the access road comes off of Main Street, and you can see it kind of going in a southerly direction, um, curves through the site and heads, uh, over to, uh, essentially provide access to the entirety of the array. Um, I'm sure you're familiar at this point with seeing, uh, solar arrays, but just in case, there's small blue rectangles that are aligned in rows. So those small rectangles are actually the solar panels, and you can see where the solar panels are proposed to be located on the site. Um, one new thing, which I mentioned earlier, is the, the, the purple area that you see, uh, in the kind of northern part of the, the project. And that's that eight-foot, um, visual screen, and it will be landscape. That was a requirement, uh, as part of the conditions of the rezoning. So that's been inserted into the drawings. Um, you can see, again, the wetlands that are on the eastern and, and western sides of the project, and, uh, there's a, a small green line, those of you who have the plan, that show the buffer zones. So you can see that none of this project is located within any of the wetland areas, it's not located in, in any of the buffer areas as well. You know, a few facts about the project. Um, you know, we have a hundred-foot setback from residential, um, districts, which have been incorporated here. Uh, the front side and rear setbacks exceed those of a commercial district. At this point, the internal ones, given there's three lots, don't make, you know, meet that requirement, but ultimately they will. But, and the, what would ultimately form the entirety of the parcel, uh, all of the setbacks are met and we don't anticipate any need for variances for the project. Um, one thing to note on this project, um, I've been out to the site a number of times. There's, um, you can see that the panels are located pretty significantly far back from Main Street. There's about five hundred feet, uh, that they're set back. So there's a very good buffer that's going to be provided from Main Street, um, you know, obviously an access road coming in. But, um, but, you know, again, pretty far back from Main Street in terms of visual, uh, screening. Um, let's see, there's, as I said earlier, twenty-nine point seven-two acres of the site, and that's existing woods. After the project, there's going to be approximately fifty percent of the parcel that's going to be cleared, which means about fifty percent is going to remain as wooded. So we have fifteen acres of the thirty acres, and again, we're at concept level, so these numbers are approximate. But fifteen acres, fifty percent of this will remain wooded, uh, after the projects have been completed. So a fairly substantial portion of the project will remain as a wooded condition. Um, the lot coverage, thirty-five percent, significantly less than the seventy-five percent that's allowed by the town. Um, so again, the project, as we envision this, um, going through the major land development process, is that we intend to meet all the conditions of the, um, the rezoning, as well as meeting all the requirements of the town's ordinances and bylaws as it relates to setbacks with no, uh, variances anticipated. Um, next steps is to, you know, really, as we get to hopefully master plan, is to start to, um, you know, put grading onto the site, to start to go through a detailed stormwater design. So those are still in front of us. And this project will require, uh, from RITM, um, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, both a preliminary determination regarding wetlands, which we anticipate that there's no significant impact to wetlands. In addition, it will require a RIPD's Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination System, essentially erosion control, um, permit as well. So those are anticipated. Uh, one that we're probably going to need, we still have to finalize our design as we move forward, is a Rhode Island Department of Transportation physical alteration permit. Again, that still is to be, uh, confirmed, but likely one of the permits that we've got in front of us. So this project has evolved as we've worked through the town's planning and then ultimately the rezoning process, and, uh, we anticipate it will continue to do so. The purpose of tonight's meeting, as you know, is to present the project, hopefully get, uh, some good feedback from the board and from the public. So as we move into the next step of master plan, uh, we can hopefully hit the mark in terms of the town's expectations and requirements. So with that, uh, I guess I'll turn it back over to Bob.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the members?
This is Carolyn. Um, just so we're clear, uh, commercial zone. Am I okay to speak?
Yes.
Okay, just so we're clear, uh, this property was converted from, um, residential to commercial. And the zoning ordinance, or bit, the acres were three percent or less or of. So no credit can be given for, uh, putting a, this solar project on seventy-five percent or less according to what the commercial zoning would require. I just wanted to make that clear.
Hmm, okay.
It should be.
Great. Terrific. And as I said, we're only thirty-five percent of lot coverage, so we're fairly low lot coverage for the project.
It's not low enough. I'm sorry, I'm stuck on the ordinance and I, I, I'm having a hard time getting past the fact that, uh, this project, um, is, uh, not, not consistent with, uh, the ordinance that the town agreed to. And I'll step over the rest of that. Uh, thanks for letting me voice my opinion there.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
This is Emily. Um, did you, I, I might have missed that. Did you say there's a, a NIPD's permit necessary for discharge? Um, because it's, can you describe that a little bit more? What's the body you're discharging to or that you think you'll be discharging to?
Yeah, so there's different kinds of RIPD's and NIPD's permits. Uh, some of them are for direct discharges, obviously some are wastewater, there's a number of different kinds. The reason for a permit for this project is because of the, uh, total acreage of land disturbance. So any place in the United States, if there's an exceedance of one acre of land disturbance, then it needs a permit from the, well, from forty-eight states, it needs a permit from the, from the state in Massachusetts from EPA. But in, uh, Rhode Island, it would need a permit because of the land disturbance. So it really is related to disturbance of land. Um, doesn't matter really where you're discharging to, it ultimately assumes that there would be, uh, make its way to water bodies of the United States. So it's because there's a land disturbance of greater than one acre.
Gotcha. Okay, um, just to make you all aware, in, and you may be aware of this already, in the westernmost corner of the site, of, um, the westernmost parcel, there is some overlap with, um, the quarter-mile buffer around the Tomahawk Brook, which is part of the Wood, Pocket Talk, Wild, and Scenic Rivers system. Um, and that's something I think, uh, this community, our town, is interested in adhering to the recommendations of that council to leave the quarter-mile buffer area undisturbed, um, in that brook and all of the tributaries and rivers in that system. Um, the, the council recommends those are not bodies that receive discharging waters from any development projects, um, further than, than what already exists. So that's just a, a buffer to be aware of.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any further members?
Yeah, no question, just a, a comment, uh, for, um, the future when we get into decommissioning and, uh, kind of, not to rehash conversations from earlier this evening, but there'll be some, uh, some in-depth discussions for the future.
Yep, yep, understood. Yeah. We, we, we were on earlier and heard the earlier conversation, and we were on the agenda at the last planning board, it was also an issue. So, uh, yeah, we, we're, uh, we've done decommissioning estimates quite a bit and are confident in our numbers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I could possibly be missing something, but I'm not seeing any sort of detention ponds or water consolidation provisions. Have I missed anything?
You haven't. So at this point, we've really focused at, at concept level on getting the panels where we want them to be, uh, getting feedback from the planning board and the public tonight. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, kind of next steps, when we go to master plan, is to then start to incorporate both grading, so, you know, the site topography and any changes. And regarding site topography, we typically try to leave things exactly as, we try not to change drainage areas, uh, where things are running till we try to leave them the same. And as far as, uh, stormwater, that would be part of what we develop for the master plan submittal.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, and clearly needed, a hundred percent, it's just, will be as part of the master plan.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Craven, do you have anyone else that you wish to have heard?
No, uh, we felt as though that the overview, uh, that we gave was sufficient. We do have other experts, including, uh, uh, an individual who works for the company. He's the chief executive officer who's available to us to answer any technical questions about the solar issues and national grid, et cetera. But if there are no such questions, then I have completed my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Carolyn. Okay. Um, I, I'd just like to get, uh, an overview of buffers from, I see we have setbacks and not, um, uh, the planning board's been very clear about how we feel when these solar projects abut other property owners, residential property owner. So, uh, in my mind, there might be, uh, confusion about what a twenty-five-foot setback is. And, and recent projects, uh, we've seen these setbacks be, uh, cleared. Uh, so I would like the opportunity to have your team consider a larger setback around those residential properties. And I would like you to be conscious of the fact that, uh, it's important to leave whatever natural growth is there, uh, to completely, uh, is, leave the view, the line of view intact so that these things are not viewed from these other residential lots.
Hmm.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Increase, increasing the setbacks around those, those properties, uh, is helpful and, um, leaning in the direction of leaving whatever trees and, and the story of there would be helpful too.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, and again, as I said earlier, about fifty percent of this parcel will remain, um, vegetated. And, uh, we certainly heard that comment, uh, pretty loud and clear as part of the rezoning process. So, um, you know, one specific thing that's unique, well, to this project, actually the other project that, that we're doing as well, is a vegetative screen, the berm that's being put in, uh, so that's something that's going to be done. Uh, the areas on the western part, I'm sorry, yeah, western part of the site, there's a wetland there with a perimeter buffer. So none of that is going to be cleared, so that'll remain unvegetated. And as Attorney Craven said in the beginning, we do have a map, um, you know, that I'm looking at now, that, that wasn't part of the submittal. But the distance to, uh, the abutting homes is at least a, uh, five hundred feet. Uh, with one exception, there is one parcel, it's, um, uh, plat ten lot, I guess it's eighty-six. So it's the one, as soon as you come into the site, it's about a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot setback from the panels to that, that property. But otherwise, we have five hundred feet, uh, and six-hundred-and-fifty feet to the abut on the west. But, but leaving the existing vegetation is clearly something we'll do to the greatest degree possible. So we share that concern.
Hmm, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the planning board? I'm sorry, I kind of ran over someone there. Go ahead.
No, I was just asking if there was any further questions, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, that's our presentation. And, uh, we'd only ask that, uh, we'd be allowed to move on to, uh, master plan. Um, and to absorb the, the, uh, suggestions made by the board into a plan that we'll present to you at the next available, uh, meeting of the, uh, Hopington Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lanfield, town planner, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Understood, go ahead.
Okay, um, first of all, uh, on the southwest, uh, portion of this project, there's a relatively small wetland area that does not have a buffer around it. Can you tell me the square footage of that wetland area? And why, why it doesn't have a buffer?
Hmm. I, to be honest, uh, Jim, I don't have the answer to that. I do see the wetland that you're talking about. Relatively small and isolated. When we got the report from our wetlands delineator, they didn't provide a buffer to that. Um, so, uh, we'll have to go back and take a look at it. It could just be a wooded wetland. Um, but, um, but it's a good point and I'll have to, uh, uh, get back to you on it. But I do see what you mean there. It doesn't show the fifty-foot buffer on it.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was because of the size of the wetland or, or whatever, but.
Yeah, yeah, I did have the... Yeah, I, I could look at the, the wetlands report quickly, but, but at this point, I think it's a good question. Um, and, and that one wasn't provided with fifty-foot buffer, and we'll just double-check it, either add it, add it if it's relevant, or just have a, a more complete description in the application we submitted for master.
Okay, great. Um, my next question, uh, page four of the narrative, where you list the application components, mentions an existing condition survey prepared by Sorenzi and Associates. Twenty-four by thirty-six, uh, full-size, and eleven by seventeen reduced set. And, um, I did not receive that, uh, in the submission. Uh, I did receive ten sets of figures one through five, which are listed below on that same page. And figure one is existing conditions.
Correct.
I don't know if that's the same thing that you're referencing here, but, but that has wooded and Curran's, uh, name on it, not Sorenzi's, so.
Hmm. Right. By the way, I did go back and look at the wetlands report, and it's because of the size of that wetland that, that doesn't have the fifty-foot buffer. So again, we'll expand on it in the master plan. And, um, and then, um, you know, we will, um, uh, it, it, it will stay in the condition it's in without fifty-foot buffer because of its size. We'll provide documentation. As far as the plans, so we did two things. One of them, we did have Sorenzi provide the detailed, uh, drawings. So they were both twenty-four by thirty-six full-size sheets as well as eleven by seventeen. Those are stamped by Sorenzi, they're on Sorenzi's title block. And then wooded and Curran will then take that information, incorporate it into our existing. Uh, somebody's talking in the background, but in any event, uh, you should have got a copy of those separate Sorenzi drawings. Did you not?
I don't believe we did, Alan. No. I just got the figure one through five, ten sets of that.
Okay, so somehow it sort of in the days, or these days of like printing it one place and shipping it to another and the kind of the unusual process, it sounds like it didn't make it all the way to you. So the existing conditions plan that we have as figure one that says wooded and Curran is based upon the information that was provided in those drawings. That said, the stamped originals are available from Sorenzi. That said, the stamped originals are available from Sorenzi. We certainly could submit them either to you now or certainly as part of the master plan, but the information on the first drawing does reflect in its entirety what was in the Sorenzi drawing. So whatever would be best, Jim.
Okay. My final question, Alan, is on the first page of your narrative, under site survey and supporting figures, the first sentence is that a topographic and comprehensive boundary survey for the project parcels has been completed and a plan had been prepared by Sorenzi and Associates Limited.
Correct.
And it also said that this plan is attached to this letter. I did not get, did you do a class 1 survey of all this, of all these parcels?
Yes. So that information is on the Sorenzi drawings, and so it's really kind of a follow-up to the last question you had. So those detailed Sorenzi drawings, it was the boundary survey and the topographic survey, we had bound those separately, so there was a set of wooded and current figures, there were five figures, and then there were a set of Sorenzi drawings. And it sounds like the Sorenzi drawings that provided that information didn't make its way to you. So again, would you like us to just, as part of content plan, just submit them to you? Or, you know, is what's on our figure 1 sufficient and we would just provide them the next? Whatever is best.
I'd like to see a plan with a class 1 survey encompassing all of the parcels that comprise this project. And the reason, I'll tell you why I'm asking, there is, on plat number 7, there is a lot 33. And that lot that you're showing on the plans that you've provided me is much smaller than the parcel 33 on my assessive maps. And the data, the data that I have on my assessive plats say that that parcel is 2.2 acres. Now, I'm looking at one of your other parcels on the same page, and it's 3-point-something acres. And if that's 3-point-something, that's not 2.2, lot number 33. So I don't know why it differs so greatly from what our assessive maps are showing. So I'd like to see a class 1 survey of your parcels, and I'd like to find out why my assessive maps have such a discrepancy.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna be clear, so are you saying that the one that, is it just a single parcel, is it plat 7, lot 33, that's the discrepancy, or is it some other one?
If you look at my assessive maps, lot number 33 pretty much bisects your project. Okay, it goes right up to lot, the lot that's to the north of it. And it's almost like parallelogram, if you look at my assessive plats, it's like a parallelogram. And lot 33 basically, you know, forms a blockade from the left-hand side of your project to the right-hand side of your project. So I'd like to know, I'd like to know why you have such a small representation of lot 33 on your map.
Okay, understood. So we'll check that, we'll get you the drawings. In addition, we'll answer the, you know, we'll try to provide background as to, you know, what the reason for discrepancy is.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Okay, moving forward, the...
Ron, we have a member of the public who'd like to comment.
Okay, before we get into that, I would just like to add that according to our pre-application guidelines, our job here is to provide the project proposers with any information that's going to help them come into compliance with what we consider to be appropriate. Now, before we get any comments from the public, I'd like to add my own little two cents worth. In view of the fact that a lot of people get very passionate about different projects and about any work going on in the town as a whole, sometimes they get to be a little bit wordy. They tend to repeat themselves. There again, this is not a judgment on those people, a lot of them are just very passionate about what they do. So if everyone could be mindful of the time that they're going to spend speaking, that would be great. I would think that the senators and the representatives in Congress are limited to five minutes apiece. I'm not suggesting a mandate, but if people could limit their comments to around five minutes, that would be much appreciated. With that being said, go ahead, Carolyn.
It's Carolyn. I'd also like to point out that we do have two more items on the agenda, it's already 9:40, so as short as possible, if we can hear some comments, that would be new and bring some new information to the table, that'd be great.
Okay, yes, very good. Thank you, Carolyn. And bear in mind, people, this is going to come back before us several more times, so there'll be plenty of opportunity in the future to say whatever you need to say. There again, that being said, Talia, go ahead, if we have people who wish to speak, now's the time.
All right, please state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Eric Bivler, I just have a brief question. I've read, I've looked at the several sets of plans, and in the legend on all the plans that I've seen, it says that the setback provision is 100 feet. I think you mentioned that tonight, so I disagree with that, right? Our dimensional regulations in town stipulate that the dimensional, the setback to any residential property has to be 100 feet from any commercial structure on a commercial or manufacturing zone property, from any structure there to a residential zone. But I can't tell from these plans, but on plans that I've seen previously, it looks to me as if the setback to property map 10, lot T 0086, that belongs to Kevin Ward, the property that is abuts the road, the access road. In prior plans that I've seen, had the utility poles running between the road and Mr. Ward's property, and then a further into the property, it had transformers that appeared to me to be 50 feet or less approximately from Mr. Ward's property. So those are clearly structures, and I believe our building official has said that she treats road, a road as a structure. So I'm wondering if you're meeting that 100-foot setback between Mr. Ward's property line and any structures on the property.
Yeah, I'm not sure which drawings you're looking at. So one of the conditions of approval as part of the rezoning process was to move the four poles. So is the version that you are looking at or have looked at, does it, we've moved them into the property kind of on the western side of the access road? Is that what you're looking at, or are yours still located to the north?
Well, I just want to know, are there any structures on your project? Are there any structures at all that are within 100 feet of residential property line and specifically Mr. Ward's after you make those adjustments?
No. So again, as part of that process, we've moved them away from that property.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Talia, anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, we have come to the end of this portion of our entertaining program. I would make a motion that we send this along and let the applicants do what they need to do. And I would request, Jim, do we need a motion to close this and move on, or?
No.
Can we just go ahead?
No, you're fine with the pre-app, Ron, you're fine.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to resume control of this to our chairman, Mr. Diario.
Great, thank you very much. Good night.
You're welcome.
Good, Ron, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Al.
Next item on the agenda, advisory opinion. Advisory opinion to the town council, request for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar energy systems, section 2, definition, section 5, district use regulations, and section 10, special use permits requested by Thomas and Cynthia Skolko. You have been provided with a copy of the proposed ordinance. My intention in having this placed on the agenda, discussions with Jim, is to formally forward this to the planning board members for their consideration. I was not anticipating any kind of introduction of the ordinance this evening, nor any lengthy discussion between the members or the public, but more a, again, forwarding it to the planning board members formally, and perhaps a discussion of the trajectory of our consideration of such an ordinance, especially given our position in the changing scenario of town council, et cetera. So a thought, perhaps, this is a lengthy document, lots of meat on the bone. Something to consider would be a discussion of this at another point in time with the idea that the planning board might consider a high-level advisory opinion to the town council. By high level, I mean something along the lines of we're in favor of it, we're not in favor of it, et cetera. And in doing so, move it to the town council for refinement, if you will, because we really don't know where the community or the town council will stand on such an ordinance. And so before we get engaged in wordsmithing and, you know, the nuts and bolts of things, it might be more appropriate to garner the opinion of a wider segment of our community. So that's just a thought. But maybe we could talk a little bit about this trajectory and see what the planning board members would like to do. So I look forward to hearing from you. Tell me what's on your mind.
Hey, this is Carolyn. I read this entire document, and there is some value in some of the points. I'm not saying that this whole document doesn't have value. My interpretation of what I'm looking at here suggests that there are some points that are raised in this recommendation before us that have value, things that are important to me. I'd personally like to see tighter language around some of our buffer conversations, et cetera. And keeping this at the high level, I would approve, I would agree, that the town council should take a look at this. And granted, this document, as the town council said the other night, is somewhat preposterous because it makes some calls on things that really, they're not relevant to some of the solar efforts in our community, but that's for them to decide. So I don't see any harm in letting the town council decide what to do with this.
Okay, thank you. Other planning board members?
I agree with Carolyn, there's a lot of stuff here that really should be discussed at length, and quite possibly on the town council level, and then we could get back to it at a future time.
This is Emily. Oh, sorry, go ahead, keep...
Just agreeing with my associate.
Just weighing in quickly here, first of all, I'm really thankful that this has been submitted. I think this is, you know, a lot of work for residents to undertake. I think it's a great sign that people are thinking about improving ordinances in the town and putting in the work to help town officials to do that. I think this is exactly how we would envision a process in this town working, where we, you know, there's an ordinance out there that's being implemented, and citizens or board members or town council members see that there might be some weaknesses in it, and they propose changes to address those weaknesses. And I think that this submission does that on a number of points. It tries to actually build additional provisions or safeguards, if you will, to parts of our current ordinance that I think we've learned over the past two years might need some tighter language, some better specification, some more description. So many of those issues that, you know, we as the planning board have even struggled with, I think are addressed by this. So some of those include, you know, like the decommissioning, this ordinance speaks to creating a more consistent decommissioning process with a formula, you know, without getting into too much detail. There's, you know, provision for enhanced buffers, it allows the planning board the ability to adjust the size of proposed solar development, the location of it, increase the setback to avoid potential impacts to neighboring properties, to roads, to reduce the need for clearing, things like that. There's better consideration of the issues and the requirements if you put a solar array on a contaminated site, rather than simply encouraging them as the current ordinance does. So I think this is, it's got some really great stuff in it. And again, I thank the Skolkos for putting in the time, effort, and money to present this and start the conversation.
Very good, thank you. All right, so first of all, has everybody had a chance to weigh in? Okay, so I...
Debbie would like to make her comment.
Oh, yes, go right ahead.
Oops, could you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, there is some kind of legal thing attached to this that it has to be, because it's an ordinance change, they have to hear it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, this is Jim, I'm a town planner. I just want to let folks know that this past Monday night, the current town council set a hearing date on this particular ordinance for January the 19th. Now ordinarily, Deb is correct, ordinarily, the planning board is supposed to get back to the town council within 45 days on an advisory opinion. So one suggestion that I might have for you tonight would be, seeing that you folks have just taken a cursory look at this and see the magnitude of it, the planning board might want to consider some sort of an advisory opinion tonight to go to the town council, and then they will have it in time for their January 19th meeting. That's one option. Another option is, we could always bring this back to the planning board, two meetings before January 19th, once on December 2nd, again, we meet on January the 6th, and that would be for the purpose of, you know, diving deeper into this. But I probably would not recommend that approach at this point in time. I like what Chairman Diario just said, is let's see how the new town council feels about this and how they want to approach it. And so I guess I would recommend to the board tonight to just come up with some sort of a high-level advisory on what you've been presented, and let's see what happens in January. You know, I believe the new town council, we have three new members here, and they're going to have to get up to speed on a lot of things really quickly, and that's probably why they set, you know, the current council allowed them some time here to get their feet on the ground, and that's probably why they set January 19th as a hearing date. So that would be my suggestion right now, is give the town council something tonight, and then we don't have to look at it until we get some direction from the town council as to what they want us to do with it. Because I definitely think, you know, it's a good, it's quite an impressive document that was prepared here, but I do believe it needs considerable review and consideration.
Would it be fair to have Sharon chime in on this? That she, she was there on Monday and helped set the date for January?
I think so. I think so.
Sharon, if you want to comment, press star nine. And now press star six, Sharon.
The only thing that I want, would like to have a conversation with the lawyer who drew this up to, I think it would be easier, because it's replacing the majority of the solar What I've kind of done is where he would have, you know, A1, I would look and see on the old ordinance where A1 is, no, I'll start the other way. Say A1 on the old ordinance, I would figure out where it is in the new ordinance because he, you know, his numbers and lettering is different. But in order to really compare this, you'd have to do this line by line, and you'd have to try to figure out what's missing and what's new. And because he's replacing the whole thing in its entirety, so now you don't know. Are all of the things that we had in the old ordinance in his new proposal? And so there's going to need, we're going to need to have that lawyer talk to us about, you know, how he created his new document and where the old stuff is in the new document. I mean, we just, I mean, I could kind of halfway figure it out, but I really need, I think we really do need either the lawyer that wrote it, in addition to our town solicitor going through this, to help us understand what's old and, you know, what's new in the new ordinance. It is going to, it is like starting all over, almost. And you know how long that took us to go through. So I think it probably would make sense for you to be doing what you're going to do, this high-level saying advisory, move forward and at least we recommend that the town council, you know, considers it. I guess that's the only thing, you're not saying, don't consider it, whereas, you know, in the other things, you used to do that, right? You could go, we recommend or we don't recommend. But it is totally replacing the solar ordinance, so it would have to require a hearing and input from the public and go through the whole big process again. That's what it's going to have to do. And I don't think it'd be fair for you to have to try to do that in two minutes, you know? I think it's on our agenda and we have to respond as a town council, so I'm not sure what your advisory would be saying. If you, unless you've gone through it all the way and understand fully the differences between the old and the new, you can't really give an accurate or an informed, you can't give an informed opinion, in my opinion. So I like what Al wants to do, I guess.
Very good, thank you. All right, so listen.
Al, if I could?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to mirror what Sharon just said and what Carolyn said previously, that we should be mindful of what we're doing, what we're getting into, what we're letting ourselves in for. This process, like any other process, there's a learning curve. Now, from what I've seen around New England, the different towns and stuff, dealing with this, Hockington is maybe not the, what would they call the gold standard, but we are far and away ahead of what a lot of the other towns are doing. Now, that being said, we already have a solar ordinance that we look back on and say, well, maybe we should have done this, maybe we should have done that. That didn't work out so good, let's revise. You see where I'm going with this? Let's get our ducks in a row, present it to the town council. I'm not saying drag our feet a long time, you know, we'll work on it conscientiously. And when we make our proposal, it's something that all five of us, six, if we include Jim, and we probably should include him, he's the planner, something we're all happy with. It's done to the best of our knowledge, to the best of our ability, and move forward with that. The previous solar ordinance, it was done at that time, but like I said, it's a learning curve. We're still on the uphill slope, but we are gaining ground. So that's just my opinion.
Ron, I hear your thought and I appreciate it. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to this.
Certainly.
Because we have shifting ground under our feet, and I'm referring to the new town council, of course. I don't know where they stand, well, I know what's published, but now that the rubber is on the road, I'm not quite sure where they stand. Personally, I'm not prepared to invest time in an ordinance that, while it has a lot of positive attributes, still needs a lot of tinkering. I'm not prepared to go there. I would much prefer the town council undertake this exercise, and perhaps they're going to remand it back to the planning board for just that kind of tinkering in the context of public workshops, et cetera. Then I'm prepared to invest in the wordsmithing and tightening the nuts to make this everything that the community needs it to be. But right now, I'm not really convinced. So my proposal would be to, and we've done this in the past, forward this to the town council. We need not be positive or negative. We can simply forward it as a working document so that the town council can conduct its business within its allotted timeframe. We take no stand on it, unless people feel that they've read, they're prepared to issue a positive advisory, that's entirely okay. But I would be proposing a neutral position until such time as the document becomes a little bit more solidified. So that's where I'm going to stand on this particular topic.
Two interjections. We do need an extension as it's 1001, and Mr. Suarez is in the audience if he'd like him to weigh in. He submitted the application on behalf of the Scalkos.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that's quite where we want to go, but let's deal with the extension. Planning board members, could I entertain a motion to extend for 10 minutes?
That would put us to 10:12.
Make it 15.
So 10:12.
I make the motion, eating till 10:15.
Motion?
I'll second.
Discussion in favor? Diario, yes?
Yes.
Right, sounds like we're all in agreement that we can hang in for a couple more minutes. So, listen, I appreciate that someone out here, perhaps the Scribner of this document, this is probably not the time to get involved in that kind of discussion. I think the planning board needs to come to terms with what they want in terms of an advisory opinion and get this off our desks. So, planning board members, tell me what you'd like to do.
There's also a member of the public who would like to comment.
I'm going to hear from the planning board members first.
This is Carolyn. I agree, a neutral position advising, directing this to the town council. And if I might take a minute, I want to elaborate on what Sharon said. She, I'm in full agreement that it's going to be a difficult process for anybody to review and critique in a timely manner. I think your recommendations in this ordinance should be laid in between the associated paragraphs and statements in our ordinance. Maybe one in a black font, yours in a blue font, something like that. But the way this is laid out right now makes it a very time-consuming, unhealthy document to try to digest next to what has already been laid out in the existing ordinance. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, very good. Any other planning board members here to weigh in on this?
Nothing that hasn't been said already. Thank you to Al, Carolyn, Sharon for their comments, that's much appreciated.
This is Emily. I'll just add one more thing. Given the planning board's schedule, our schedule tonight and next month, I agree that it could be productive to send this to the town council with this neutral opinion. Although I would say, me personally, I don't really have a neutral, I have a positive opinion of this as it stands. I'm not, you know, accepting of every single phrase and word, but I'm very supportive of this advancing and people considering it more. Why I agree with the neutral opinion is that I think under the town council, this can be brought to a wider forum, as you suggested, Al, that, you know, a workshop format where we can hear from the public. Obviously, we have members of the public that want to speak about this tonight. The author, I actually have some questions for the author on this. I think that it's worthy of a much bigger discussion, and I'm not sure that that needs to happen in a planning board meeting, right? Like, the other option is you continue this to December because the town council doesn't meet on this until January anyway. But if the town council is going to have a process where public input is allowed, encouraged, et cetera, then we can participate in that forum as well. Am I missing a piece there, or does that sound like what everybody's thinking?
No, I think we're on the same page. Please don't misinterpret. If planning board members are inclined to issue a positive advisory opinion on the document, perhaps with caveats that, you know, it might need a little bit of work, I'm perfectly okay with supporting that approach as well. I just, maybe I'm just ordinance shy at this point. I just want to make sure that the community is on board with this approach before the planning board members and staff and everyone else get all spun up about spending a lot of time tinkering around with something, no matter how beneficial it might be, it's going to take a lot of time. Believe me, in my tenure, I have wordsmithed more documents than I can count. It is time-consuming and laborious, and I'm prepared to go there if the community, if that's the direction of the community. But I want to hear that before I invest my time, that's all.
Yeah, understood.
So, in summary, if someone wants to make a positive advisory, I'm behind you.
Jim Lamphier, town planner. I'd just like to say that a document of this size, this comprehensiveness, is normally something that you would see generated in-house, okay, by the town, that came out of a planning board workshop, town council workshop, joint workshop with the town council and planning board. Keep in mind, this is a very detailed document that was prepared by an outside source and given to the town council, as any proposed change to the zoning ordinance would be. I don't know that the planning board, given the detail that's in this ordinance right now, I can't see where the planning board is equipped to render a positive advisory to the town council on accepting this ordinance. Now, even if you were to do so, it's going to go to a public hearing before the town council where something like this will probably be scrutinized pretty detailed. But just ask yourself the question, are you ready to give a positive advisory on adoption of this ordinance to the council, given the level of scrutiny? There is no, no department heads in this town have even looked at this. I mean, how are you in a position to do that? I could see, I could see the planning board giving an advisory like Chairman Diario just said, that, you know, we think this ordinance deserves further consideration in another forum over an extended period of time. But this is not something, this is not something that's adopted on the spur of the moment. And again, as Sharon said, this is pretty much a replacement, a repeal and replacement of the existing solar ordinance we have now. You might want to compare the two and see what you're losing or what you're gaining in the process. I mean, this hasn't even been, this hasn't been vetted to any degree right now. How are you, how are you in a position to give any sort of a solid advisory on this? This was, this was by an outside source. This came to us the same way the zone changes came for the, and comprehensive permit request that came from solar developers. This was presented by another side of the issue, and you're going to tell me that you're not going to give this proposal the same lengthy consideration that you gave to the zone changes? We had public workshop after public workshop on meeting at schools on every zone change. We've been through this for two and three years now. And all of a sudden now, because some outside party comes up with an ordinance like this that might have some merit, might have a lot of good things in there. Maybe we do want a lot of it. All I'm saying is, we don't know at this point. We don't know, and as Chairman said, we don't know how the town council's going to feel about this as a whole. Are they willing to, are they willing to stick their necks out and adopt this with a limited public hearing and just replace what we have now without some real serious consideration of this? I mean, I looked at it briefly. It's a radical departure from what we have now. I mean, there's a definition in there of a major solar array, and it's anything over 40,000 square feet, and that's to be done as a major, reviewed as a major land development project. Do you want all of our farmers now to have to, when they want to put a one-acre solar field on their farm, to go through a major land development process? I mean, maybe that is some way, I don't know. And I'll tell you, whatever the planning board wants, whatever the town council wants, I'm fine with it. All I'm saying is, you know, read what you have here and just think a little bit first before you act.
Jim, this is Carol. Just to clarify, you know, I wasn't suggesting that we, you know, jump wholeheartedly into accepting every word of this tonight with no public comment and minimal input. I don't, what I'm trying to avoid is a neutral opinion from the planning board coming across as, we don't care whether or not this is advanced. I care that this is advanced and that it goes through the process. So my opinion is neutral and that I don't accept all of the language as written and, you know, without an explanation or public input. But, you know, I just want to be clear about the wording here and how this is being presented. I don't think we're advocating for a reckless approach.
No, I didn't, I heard what you said, Emily, very intently, and I didn't take your comments to be that way. So don't feel as though I'm, you know, coming back at you anyway.
Jim, I have a technical process question based on what you're telling us. For instance, if we sent this to the town council with a positive recommendation, the town council would review the document and accept it as is? I was, I'm under the impression that if we send this document to the town council, even with a neutral position, that the town council will dissect this, not approve it for what it is. Because if that were the case, I wouldn't want to do that. I would want the planning board to do the dissection.
Well, let me interject. At the risk of taking a little bit of time here, again, going back to my comment about the shifting ground of the new town council members, my understanding of their platform, for the most part, was of greater support for the planning board and its opinions. So, the planning board issues an advisory opinion, that is a pretty significant move. Now, it's not significant if the town council is not paying attention to us, but if the town council is paying attention, they're going to put great weight in the fact that we have issued a positive advisory opinion. That means a lot. So as Jim says, if this is what you want and you are fully prepared to issue such an opinion, that's great. I'm not quite that inclined at this point, and hence my vote for the whole neutral concept, which by the way, is not neutral parentheses, I don't care about it. It's- It's neutral, I want to see it move forward, but I think it might need some work in a different forum. So, and that can be handled by the verbiage of the opinion. So I just want to make my point clear there.
Jim Lamphier, town planner. I just want to say that the town council can do anything it wants to do with this. Even absent an advisory opinion from the planning board. If you recall, a couple of years ago, the planning board was presented with an, asked for an advisory opinion on a zone change on a solar project, without mentioning any names. And they punted. They said, "We don't have enough information, we're not prepared to issue an advisory opinion on this." So, that was, that was the opinion that went to the town council. And the town council did what it did on that particular project. So, your advisory opinion tonight can be anything. It could be just what the chairman said, who said, "You know, this seems to have some merit. We'd like the town council to take a look at this and study it further." And we need to, we need to study it further. That could be your advisory opinion if you want. Your advisory opinion could be anything or nothing. And I'll tell you what, regardless of what it is, as we know from experience, the town council can do whatever it wants regardless of what this planning board says. So it's all up to them, it's entirely up to them.
Got it, so I think we beat this up enough. I think, I think we're all pretty clear on what we'd like to do. I think we all want to see it move forward. I'm looking for a planning board member to make a motion that summarizes our feelings in a cogent way and let's move this to the town council.
We'll need another extension. It is now 10:16.
Miscalculation. 10 more minutes? Folks, I need a motion for 10 more minutes.
Make a motion for 10 minutes.
Motion.
10:30.
10:30, second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Deorio, yes?
Rellwood, yes?
Light, yes. Shumshina, yes.
All right, good deal, back to business. Who's feeling inclined?
So, I'll make a motion, this is entirely off the top of my head. I'm going to make a motion that we send this request for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to solar energy systems, Section 2, definition, Section 5, district use regulations, and Section 10, special use permits requested by Thomas and Cynthia Sculco, to the town council with a neutral advisory opinion with the reasoning that this draft contains a lot of, this draft has a lot of merit. It contains components that the planning board is interested in learning more about and hearing from the public about. And we would like to see advanced and also hear the town council's thoughts and opinions on the topic.
I'd like to have very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Deorio, yes?
Hi.
Rellwood, yes?
Light, yes. Shumshina, yes.
Okay, we're done, outstanding.
Do you want to hear from the three members of the public who wanted to comment on this?
I...
Yes, you do.
Yes, I do. I would only, thank you, I would only ask that, please be brief in your comments. The clock is running and we still have several items on our agenda. So with that, please.
All right, I will state the last four digits, 5, 7, 6, 1. Please state your name for the record. Press star six.
Hi, Carol DeRozers, I'm glad that you made the motion that you did. I think that it warrants time to look at this ordinance, even though it's lengthy. This is an important issue for the town and I think there are a lot of valuable tenants of this revised ordinance. And I look forward to public hearings, thank you.
Very good, Carol, thank you very much.
All right, last four digits are 1, 7, 0, 1. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Sheri Aronian, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Great, thanks, planning board, I just wanted to thank you for opening up the discussion, you know, on this document. I was on the call on Monday, also heard, you know, Attorney Squares talk. And I like the idea of, you know, pushing this to a workshop, similar to what we did in 2018, the end of 2018 when it was, you know, adopted in 2019. The good parts of this document, I've had a chance to look it over, is it seems to kind of compartmentalize a lot of these solar proposals. You know, for example, and this is by no means saying that, you know, I'm, you know, jumping on every word of the document. But I like the way it compartmentalizes things such as farms, buy rights, rezones. And I think if we were able to massage that, you know, with the community and with the planning board and with the town council, perhaps that document would read, you know, even better than the document we have today. You know, I think we can all agree that we've learned a lot over the last two years on how these projects come through the town. And I just think opening up the discussion is something that I really appreciate that you guys did. You know, based on what I heard from Attorney Squares on Monday night, you know, I think, you know, he'll, sounds like he's more than willing to work with you guys on this. So, like I said, I just wanted to thank you again for opening up the conversation. Thank you.
All right, last four digits, 8, 2, 2, 2. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau, Old Depot Road. And the first thoughts I had were, what's the rush? I know it's presented by someone that owns a piece of property and they also live in New York. There was a discussion about that at the council meeting. I don't know if the Sculcos had every hearing, every meeting, every workshop for the current solar ordinance from January 22, 2019. I agree with the comments that were made. If there's some good information in there and some good changes, let's do it. But let's take our time and do it right. I don't see the fact that the meeting on Monday, the council meeting, some members of the council weren't even sure if it got to the planning board. And I already saw it on the agenda. So it just seems like it's such a rush, as Sheri pointed out, to push such an important document. We need to really take a look at this and I'm concerned that the public really needs to look at this. Just like we did the last time, meeting after meeting, so that's my only comment, thank you.
Good, Joe, thank you. All right, done with that issue, excellent, thank you. Moving on, planners' report.
I approved an administrative subdivision this past month for Mr. Oldfield. Is that in your packet?
Outstanding, very good.
And online.
And online. Good, anything else to add?
No, that's our report.
Cool, correspondence and updates? Quick forum. No hands. Date of the next regular meeting, December 2nd. Anything else that can immediately come before us? Otherwise, I'm prepared to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, and further discussion? All in favor? Deorio, yes?
Rellwood, yes?
Rellwood, yes.
Enthusiastic yes from Carolyn.
Shumshina, yes.
Very good, thank you all for your time, we made this deadline 10:24. Very good, thank you all. I'm good.